So the COVID-19 circumstances. This meeting is going to be conducted pursuant to provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2520 and N 3920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act in pursuers to the orders of the Health Officer of San Antonio County. And as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business as permitted to under the orders as an essential governmental function. Commissioners, the Assistant City Attorney and city staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the Cable Channel 26 through livestream broadcasts as an alternate method of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of email public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or you can enter *9 to raise your hand if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Berman.
President.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Hauser.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Chair Niblin.
I'm present, thank you. Why don't we then move on to the salute to the flag? And Commissioner Godwin, could you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic. Which stands one nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. That then will take us to our administrative business, and the first item of administrative business is the approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Berman, I see your hand raised.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Berman has moved that we approve the order of agenda. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Could we go ahead and take a roll call vote on this matter?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes, six votes in favor and not opposed.
Okay, thank you unanimously, six to zero. There are no minutes to approve, and there's no need, I just want to confirm, no need for designation of liaison to the City Council meeting.
That is correct, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, that will then take us to the portion of the agenda that's set aside for oral communications, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is, excuse me, that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Do we have any speakers this evening for oral communications?
None have raised their hands at this time, Chair.
Okay, well, why don't we wait for five or 10 seconds just to see if anybody does, and if not, we'll go ahead and move on.
And as a reminder to our public participating by phone, press *9 to raise your hand if you wish to speak at this time on an item not on the agenda.
Thank you. Hey, Commissioner Big Stick, I see your hand up. Was there something you wanted to state?
You, I'm not sure if anyone else is hearing it. Chair, when you raised the paper, it seems like specifically then there's a sound issue going on. Am I the only one receiving that, or are other people hearing that too?
I hear it as well.
Okay, well, I'll try to be sensitive about lifting the papers there. I shouldn't need to do it too often. I find that I'm, I can't see as well as I used to, so I tend to need to bring the paper a little closer to my face, so I will endeavor not to do that.
It's a space thing between you and the microphone.
Okay, excellent. Well, having used that time to consider that, I don't see again that there are any public comments, so that being the case, I think we're going to go ahead and move from oral communication to new public hearings. And our first new public hearing is file number 2000-2001, Site Development Permit PSD-71402, Use Permit UP-90402, Tentative Subdivision SUB-20402, Authorization for Heritage Tree Removal and Authorization for Logging Operations for Construction of Four New Town and Complex Buildings and Associated Subdivision for Condominium Purposes on an Approximately 53,000 Square Foot Developed Lot Located on the East Side of Monterey Road, Southeast of Monterey Road and Hickey Boulevard Intersection, Assessment Parcs Number 009381010. The project would include removal of seven heritage trees and 59 heritage trees, and it's commonly known as the Vista Mar Project. The project SEQA action, or the recommended SEQA action at this point is not applicable, probably because the recommended action at this point is to continue the items of the Planning Commission meeting of August 3, 2020. If we could have a quick staff report on the matter.
Thank you, Chair. The item is not yet ready for consideration. Staff had hoped to present the item this evening for a public hearing. However, during the final detailed preparation for the item, we noticed some of the changes in our work with the applicant had not been made across all of the application materials. And so, in order to give the applicant some time to make those changes and then ensure that staff was in agreement in its analysis with all of the changes, we ask for a bit more time and ask for the continuance as stated in the staff report, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from any of the commissioners before I entertain a motion to continue this item? And if not, I'm certainly happy to entertain a motion to continue the item.
Chair Niblin.
Commissioner Berman, I'm sorry, City Attorney.
We may want to ask if there's any public comment on this before we entertain a motion.
That sounds good. First question then, does anybody, does any commissioner have any comment or question with respect to the matter before I open it to public comment? Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, I have a quick question for staff. A couple of months ago, I believe we received entitlement, an entitlement document, like an EIR almost, for this project. Is that still current, or will we receive a new document?
So I can take that one. A draft ISMD, Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration, was released in January for a public review. A final will be attached to the staff report when it's brought back to you guys.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you very much. And will the final be more or less what the draft was, or are there substantial changes made to the draft?
Minimal changes. So it'll be significantly shorter.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments at this point, so I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Murdock to ascertain whether or not there's any public comments on this, on this item.
There are no members of the public with hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Go ahead and bring it back then to the commission. Actually, I have a question for the City Attorney if I might. And I guess one of my questions is when we're dealing with a situation like this where we don't, we haven't actually begun the hearing substantively on a matter, is there a particular reason why staff can't just remove an item from the agenda, notwithstanding the agenda's been published? Some of the agencies that I work for, when an item is been agendized but it's determined after the fact that, you know, it's not ready to go, sometimes it's just pulled from the agenda without any need for particular action, except insofar as the, you know, the board itself or the commission in this case has approved in the order of the agenda with whatever modification, i.e. removal of the, of the item, as opposed to considering it as a separate item with a, with a motion, et cetera, separate and distinct.
So in this case, there is an item on the agenda, and staff is seeking an action of the planning commission to continue the matter to a date certain. As you know, the Brown Act requires public comment on any item that's on the agenda, so in this case, there is still an item on the agenda. There will be action of the planning commission to continue to a date certain, so that's why I'm asking to check to make sure there's no public comment.
Oh, no, that part I got. I'm perfectly fine with it. I was just sort of curious about, again, I'm sometimes used to seeing a situation where, you know, public comment is required before the board acts on a matter, or the commission acts on a matter. Here, we weren't proposing to act on it at all, so I was sort of curious about why we needed to consider it as a separate item as opposed to just striking it from the agenda at the point that we're approving the agenda.
Because I think we want it continued to a date certain so that the notice, the notice requirements follow the act, the item itself.
I see, so you don't have to republish a notice?
I think that's, that's the goal.
That's correct. So the main administrative purpose of this activity is to make sure we don't have to expend the money and the staff resources to send notice again. And so that's our preference for adding items when we believe we have a date certain to continue them to. In some cases, we aren't sure when the item will be ready again, and it may not be appropriate to do that.
Well, that makes perfect sense. Thank you so much. Commissioner Hauser.
You know, I can't actually recall, Chair, if you closed up the public comment, but I would just mention that it looks like there is an attendee with their hand up now.
That's correct. We do have one individual who has raised a hand.
Okay, well, why don't we circle back? I didn't, in fact, formally close public hearing. If there's somebody who wants to speak to the matter, why don't we go here? Go ahead and hear from that individual.
So Mario Matthew, you should be able to speak now, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak up. This is my first time attending a planning commission meeting, so I'm not sure if I'm asking the right questions or in the right manner. So if I'm making a mistake, please, I apologize in advance. So I live in Monterey Road, very close to the place where this land is set for development, and I'm wondering, since there are so many trees being cut, is there an opportunity to at least transplant some of them, or does it all have to be cut? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew, for your comment. We're going to go ahead then and close the public hearing, assuming there are no other hands, and bring it back to the commission at this point, you know, for any, you know, discussion or, and/or for a motion to continue to a date certain, August 3, it looks like. Commissioner Berman.
Given the public comment, I'm wondering if staff could maybe speak to the feasibility, whether it's cost implications or literally feasibility on tree transporting.
Commissioner Berman, I think I would prefer to wait on the substance of the project until we actually are ready to present the item in its totality, rather than segmenting the factual information about the project, please.
That makes sense. Then if staff could just take note to look into that comment and maybe be prepared to answer it once this item comes back.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Anything else from any other commissioners? Commissioner? Is there a commissioner who'd like to make a motion to continue the item? Commissioner Hauser.
Yes, Chair, thank you. I'll make a motion to continue the item to the date certain of August 3.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Hauser to continue this item to August 3, 2020. Is there a second? Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Great, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the Planning Commission meeting of August 3, 2020. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So then we'll move to the second item on the agenda, and that is file number 2019-036, Site Development Permit PSD-84719, Coastal Development Permit CDP-41819, Use Permit UP-12119, Parking Exception PE-18819, and Sign Permit S-13220. Excuse me. Filed by Jacqueline Gratz and Aaron Gregory to construct a two-story mixed-use building with 1,043 square feet of commercial space located on the ground floor and 783 square feet of residential, 783 square foot residential unit located on the second floor on a 2,430 square foot non-conforming lot developed with an existing one-story single-family residential non-conforming use located at 184 Paloma Avenue, APN-016022080. The recommended SEQA action on this matter is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 5301 of the SEQA guidelines, and the recommended action of staff is to approve the project as conditioned. If we could get a staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The project before you is a unique proposal to lift an existing single-family residence to the second floor level and to construct a new ground floor commercial area. The project would eliminate an existing lawful non-conforming use, which is a single-family residence in a commercial zoning district, and establish a permitted ground floor commercial use in the second floor conditionally permitted residential use. A conditionally permitted use is a use which may be authorized upon approval of a use permit. The project would establish a 1,043 square foot commercial space comprised of a retail area, office, workshop, and accessible restroom. The commercial area would be separated from the 783 square foot residential unit above, which would be accessed by an exterior staircase. The residential unit would retain the floor plan of the existing single-family residence, except that the project would add exterior decks on the front and rear of the residential unit. The architecture of the building would result in an integrated design between the commercial and residential spaces, while each would retain its own identity and be distinguishable from the other. The project would integrate a large mural on the left or east elevation to help break up the large blank surface comprised primarily of the wall supporting the exterior staircase. The project would occur on a 2,430 square foot non-conforming lot. Staff acknowledges the small lot area and narrow 25-foot lot width present challenges for the project in terms of full zoning compliance. In particular, the project is seeking a parking exception from the six off-street parking spaces required by the zoning regulations. The project would provide two off-street parking spaces and seek an exception from four off-street parking spaces. The project also seeks a parking exception from the covered parking requirement for one of the residential unit spaces. While the project has sought a parking exception, it has been designed otherwise to comply with all other zoning standards. Unbalanced, staff believes the project would advance important elements of the general plan and local coastal program, as well as the zoning regulations, by eliminating a non-conforming use, retaining an existing housing unit within the project, by creating a visitor-serving commercial use of particular interest to visitors, by increasing the vibrancy of this portion of West Sharp Park with the addition of a large artwork in the form of a mural, and by providing more off-street parking than presently exists on the project site. Therefore, staff recommends adopting the attached resolution, including the conditions of approval, to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock, for that concise report there. Are there any questions or comments for staff before we move on to a public comment? Or actually, before we hear from the applicant and then the public comment? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. And it occurs to me that the only issue that might come up is parking. And with that in mind, I'm noticing that there's currently apparently not any parking property associated with this property. I was wondering if you might just give us a brief history of how that is that we have even a house with no parking?
Sure, I can try to address that issue. And first, I need to correct a statement I made. The lot's actually 27 feet wide, not 25 feet wide. Not much wider, but I want to be specific and correct. This site, I'm not sure of the year that this use was established, but I strongly believe that it was likely before we had the current single-family residential parking standards. And so this structure is an old structure, and it's one that was not designed with a garage as the current zoning regulations require. And so this is not unique in the Sharp Park neighborhood, that a home is existing on a site and does not have any off-street parking, in particular a garage space. And so it is an artifact, if you will, of a prior period of development in town.
All the questions I can form at the moment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Hauser.
Thank you, Chair. I have several questions, maybe a couple that would be more appropriate for the applicant, so let me know if I should reserve those. I wanted to understand if Pacifica has any FAR requirements for sites like this.
We do not have any floor area ratio standards for projects like this.
Would this, would this floor area ratio be consistent with other projects that are in the city?
I don't know, because I haven't done the analysis, but my, my sense is that the floor area ratio may be higher because the lot area is so small. However, the commercial area and the residential unit are both rather small in absolute terms, so I'm not sure how to compare to other sites.
Okay. Then I feel almost silly asking this question, but are they literally, is the applicant literally proposing to lift up the house and build commercial underneath it?
That is the proposal, yes.
Okay, okay. And then just a question for staff. Was there any discussion about asking the applicant to underground the joint pole that's fronting the property now?
We have not discussed that with the applicant. As the commission has discussed this issue in prior public hearings, there's no citywide policy for undergrounding of utilities in cases like this. We do have a practice of requiring applicants to install the utilities underground from the existing joint pole or other point of connection into the project site, so it does reduce some amount of visual clutter from utilities. However, the expense involved with undergrounding utility poles is, it can be significant, and unless this is in an area where there's an established policy or underground utilities district, it's not something we typically, typically look to impose on a project on an ad hoc basis.
And then my last question is about the setbacks. The first is the right setback, so I understand that there's a three and a half foot setback currently. When I visited the site, it looks like the adjacent home is only a few inches away from the property line, so I just wanted to understand the overall spacing between the two homes. And then I also wanted to understand the two-inch setback proposed for the left property line.
Sure. So you are correct that the right setback, which is on the west side of the property, is just shy of three and a half feet. It's three feet, five and a half inches, as indicated on the plans. And it looks as though the dimension from the property line to the adjacent residence may be approximately one foot, three inches. And so overall, you'd have less than five feet between the structures. That's not uncommon in cases like development in the Sharp Park neighborhood, where there's a lot of older development that predated current zoning standards. On the left side or the east side of the property, you are correct that there is a two-inch setback on that side. It's a small setback. There is no minimum setback requirement in commercial zoning districts. It's, the setback may be established by the commission as approved in the Site Development Permit. I think the applicant can speak more to the decision to pursue this particular setback, but as I assess the situation, they're looking to do what they can on a very constrained site. And so, once you construct the stairway that meets current residential code requirements, and you're trying not to further constrain the right or west side of the property, you're really left with precious little space in the 27-foot wide lot to comply with a variety of different requirements. And so I think any further considerations in that regard probably are best for the applicant to speak to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Berman.
I have a few questions for the applicant, but one question for staff, and I'll save the others for the applicant later. I noticed at the site, the existing driveway to the apartments, I believe, to the left or I believe east of the applicant's site is overlapping with the applicant property line, so the driveway is kind of shifted and in conflict almost with the fence and property line of 184 Paloma. And then I noticed in the plans, the proposed plans, that the new driveway to be installed for this project doesn't really take into consideration the adjacent driveway. So I'm wondering if, if staff or the applicant are tracking to basically rebuild both those driveways together, I'd imagine only as one driveway.
I think the applicant might want to speak to the considerations for how to coordinate with the adjacent driveway approach. I think there is a consideration as well to be made about accessibility and how you continue that across both properties, and so the applicant may have done more analysis on that point.
Okay. Then I'll hold the rest of my questions, including that one, for after the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Lille.
Thank you, Chair. I did have that same question about the continuous driveway. So thank you, Commissioner Berman, for asking it. My other question was related to the, both east and west of, and this doesn't necessarily apply to, to this, the parking on, for this project, but just parking in the area. East and west, there's these planter bulbouts on the street, and I guess it's a two-part question related to those. It's, one is, can a vehicle, can a private vehicle park next to those planter bulbouts? Because they're kind of, they're shifted into the street a little bit, and so it's, is that parking, is that legal parking, or is that parking that, that's not legal for the neighborhood? And then the other is, I guess, how do those generally come about? And is, are there any, I guess, what's the history of those, if staff knows?
I don't know the answer to that question. It doesn't appear that the bulbouts are red-curved or signed for no parking, and so I think it is a curious situation. However, I'd have to check in with our staff in the Public Works Department to determine what regulations might apply to that location. I don't have that information right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lille, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thanks so much. Commissioner Berman, I see your hands still up. Did you have another question, or was that just leftover?
Oh, that was leftover, but I was, I wanted to add to my previous question. It does look like the residence to the west as well, that driveway overlaps too, so I think this would end up being, three parcels would have a combined driveway. But I'll hear from the applicant.
Great, thank you. Well, the applicant's actually got a pretty good preview of what some of the interests are going to be then in terms of presentation, but this would be the time that we would then go to the applicant and afford the applicant opportunity after 10 minutes to introduce the project and provide the comments to the commission that the applicant cares to. The applicant may reserve a portion of the applicant's time to respond to any public comment that may, that may come after the applicant's presentation, so I'll let the applicant decide, the extent to which they want to do that. So why don't we go ahead then and hear from the applicant on the project?
Mr. Brinkman, before we get started, I will be keeping track of your time and let you know when there's one minute remaining. Mr. Brinkman, you're currently on mute.
We're going to start with the homeowner, Aaron, and then I'm going to follow him up.
Sounds good.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. I'm Jackie. This is my husband, Aaron. We have two small children, and we've been living here at 184 Paloma since 2014.
Yeah.
And we have a family-run t-shirt company based off Aaron's scientific illustrations of prehistoric dinosaurs and marine sea life. So want to tell them a little bit about the company?
Versus non-prisoned.
Versus non-priestor dinosaurs.
Right.
Yes, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. So our company's called Cotton Crustacean, been around since 2012. It's definitely a family-run kind of mom-and-pop, pop-up boutique. But the dream has always been to have a brick-and-mortar store. When we first moved to Pacifica, we were pretty fresh in the company and jumped into Fog Fest in around 2014, I think was the first year. Showed that it was really an audience for, especially here, just in town, in this coastal town and all the other communities nearby, people that would come out to Fog Fest. So kind of gave us the idea that this would be a great place to eventually open that dream brick-and-mortar store. We were renting at first, and then we decided it was pretty imperative that we own our own house and be in control of our situation like that. And this house was the cheapest and the most rundown place in Pacifica. No one wanted it when every other property was selling within, you know, a week. This place was sitting for about three months, so we were able to come in, make a good offer, and we got it. But what really kind of essentially the deal for us is when the owner told us that it was essentially a commercial location that had been many things over the years before it was lived in as a residence. It was an answering service. It was a real estate office. And so that was really appealing to us because of, obviously, the future possibility of maybe opening a store here. But now as we've settled in, it would be pretty hard for us to go anywhere else right now. And so we came up with the idea that, well, we have a commercial property that we're living in. How do we do the best of both worlds? And we've even considered just turning the living room into the shop and cramming it into the back, but that wouldn't really work too well. And it's such a beautiful old house. It's been here since, it was built in '40. It was moved to this location in about '60, which is probably why it's so close to the neighbor's house. And so we didn't want to tear the roof off. We just put a new roof and solar on it. The idea of that seemed insane, so we thought it would be much more logical to pick the whole thing up, put a commercial space underneath. We've been talking to local contractors, and we are very pleased to hear that that is very possible. And we've gotten quotes from house movers, and everything is within reach. So we really feel what it would do for the community, it would be very beneficial. It'd create a destination location that would be super unique to Pacifica. Unique also because it's owned and run by Pacificans. And so it would help, you know, further the kind of downtown mission since we are about one block from the main street Palmetto. Yeah, it would create a place for neighbors to come by and communicate and converse. It'd be kind of a educational location since we will be showcasing a lot of the local flora and fauna in our designs. A little bit of natural history, even a little bit of history, history. Yeah, just, we have a dream for a very specific Pacifica business here. And, you know, something that we can retire into later, obviously. Yeah, that's kind of the overall dream of the project. See, to answer some of those questions, real quick about the bumpouts. Most of the bumpouts are there because there were trees in those locations. Most of the trees on Paloma in this block have started to come down, just over age and wind damage. And so the bumpouts obviously remain. There's usually a stump. I have adopted the two adjacent to our property and take care of them, replanted them and made them big lush gardens. We don't have one in front of ours, house. So it's one less thing to worry about in regards to this project.
They are legal to park at, and people in the neighborhood do park on them.
Yeah, randomly. Some of them are legal, some of them are not. Some have red curbs and some don't. But these two right next to us, you can park next to them. The continuous driveway is a weird feature of this property and again hearkens back to just different regulations when the house was moved here in '60 or so. The plan would be to incorporate the curb slant of the driveway all the way across. We don't really see much reason to have a, any kind of small stretch of curb there. Yeah, I just, but don't see it that would work for anybody. I'm seeing it. Access is, so we do have a large driveway to the east of our property. That property is actually commercially zoned as well, even though it's non-conform right now. It's got residents in it as part of the new Sharp Park plan that's becoming all commercial and office, retail and office. That's like a really fluid kind of community-use space for a driveway because it's the only access to the back of the strip mall that houses Fog City Yogurt, El Toro Loco, the barber shop.
Debate shop.
Yeah, so especially Market Debate Shop, Jose at the restaurant El Toro Loco, and Raul at Fog City. They all use that to make deliveries, to bring in their delivery trucks. Their kids even play back there. And we're obviously pretty tight with our neighbors too. So we go over there, and I've taught my daughter to ride her bike over there. I have to go over there to weed all the weeds on our side of the fence. So there's never been an issue with access in that regards. I have reached out to the property owner to let them know of our plans, to let them know that I might need to paint a bunch of sharks on the wall at some point. And hopefully, you know, I don't see any reason why he wouldn't be okay with that, but. And then most of the construction, with the contractors that have come by, I brought this up, and they have all seen no problem with actually constructing pretty much that wall and even the stucco and everything, being able to do that from onsite from our property. So it really comes down to the mural, and I'm pretty sure the property owner will be stoked on that, hopefully. Unless he doesn't like sharks. What else was there? Question was?
I think that's it.
Yeah.
For other questions that we heard.
Brian, you want to take it from there?
Sure. I don't know how much time I have left, but I just wanted to touch on the parking real quick. As Christian mentioned, the project meets all the other zoning requirements, just not the parking. And although, based on the zoning code, it appears we're well short on the parking. In reality, most of the time, the site's impact on the neighborhood will actually be less than it currently is and rarely more. Right now, they both have to park off the street or on the street. They're going to get their cars off the street, which is going to permanently free up those two parking spots. And then just as visitors come, unless there's, you know, three or more visitors at one time, in reality, the product's going to be providing more parking or opening up parking for the neighborhood. I think they touched on some of the questions, so I'll wait to help address any further ones you have.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Wondering if the commissioners at this juncture have any comments or questions they want to ask the applicant before we move to a public comment or question. Commissioner Berman.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, a couple of questions. So thank you, Aaron and Brian, for touching on some of the questions we already had. Especially the driveway, Aaron, thank you.
Sure.
You mentioned that you did reach out to the, is it apartments, to the east?
Yeah, it's a three-unit apartment building.
Okay. You did say that you reached out to that owner. Did you receive a response yet?
I haven't received a response. We were told about the inquiry about the access early today. And so I texted him and reached out from there. I haven't heard back yet.
Okay.
Yep.
But you're on texting basis, so.
Yeah, I've texted him about other issues, and we're both very causal and understanding about stuff, yeah.
Okay, good to know. Wondering for the parking, so I know in the staff report, we are asked to consider if the residents, I know you guys intend to live there, but in the future, if something happened and where you chose to move, if someone else were to live there. So I'm wondering, in that case, for the parking, I mean, employees would, or yourselves, would have to drive to the shop? And then if you, I'm wondering if you plan on hiring more employees or how you might handle more than two cars?
Well, definitely the plan is that it's a family-run business. It'll be Jackie and I maintaining it, which will also mean we'll be closed a couple of days to give us a break because we don't intend to have employees. Maybe when our daughters get old enough, they will, but they'll obviously already be living here. I have mentioned to the couple of young teenagers that live on each side of us that are probably 14, 15, that when the time comes, and when they're 16, if they want a cool job working with dinosaurs and shark stuff, to come knock on my door. And so, you know, that might be a cool opportunity to give a job to, you know, our literal neighbor. But as far as employees that would have to drive here, that's definitely not the kind of shop business that we'll be running. You can almost think of it as like, we're like a visitor center, museum gift shop, that I'll have my open art studio in the back. And so if I'm going to be working at home making art, might as well have a store where people can come in and say hi and buy some stuff, you know?
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Then a couple more questions, thank you. I know we have, on other streets in the downtown Sharp Park area, there have been issues with overflow parking or just not being able to find parking.
Sure.
I don't live, I don't live near this road. I'm wondering, what's parking like on the road?
It's gotten significantly better while a lot of the other neighborhood, parts of the neighborhood have gotten kind of worse. It's gotten better, and maybe that's just because certain businesses have moved, and so there's less frequency of employees coming in. But we have commercial parking directly across the street, and there's four spots there. And then there's a large parking lot for winters that, weather winters appreciates, that are not patrons of the other businesses like the bait shop and whatnot. You should park there temporarily to go get a burrito or grab some bait and move on. And then right behind us, to the east of us, it's a very long stretch of Francisco that's all commercial parking. A lot of it is green curb, so it's two-hour, but a lot of it is pretty much 24-hour. And I wouldn't even know the number. I would say it's probably a couple dozen spots just right there. It stretches all the way.
It's north and south of Paloma.
Right. It stretches all the way down to the public parking lot near City Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add on real quick, I also, my office is on Francisco, right around the corner from Aaron and Jackie. And, you know, that, this area of Francisco, close to Winters, did used to get heavily used. But once El Toro Loco moved a couple blocks down the street, that's freed up the parking, and it's definitely not impacted all the time like it used to be.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to, I know you're an artist, and it looks like you'll be doing t-shirt screening. I'm wondering, any of the products that you use, are there any chemicals that could be hazardous if, you know, left out on the street or whatever it may be?
Right. Eventually, we do have the goal of having a small screen printer in the back. Would be a manual-operated press, very old school. And we use water-based inks when that happens. But the main goal of this right now is just the retail front. All of our shirts are printed locally by other printers, one in South San Francisco and one in San Francisco. But when that time comes, the trend in our kind of boutique marketer shirts is to use water-based inks, which are biodegradable, totally non-toxic, yeah. That's pretty much it, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, I wasn't sure if there was lead-based anything.
Sure, yeah. That's a great question.
Then, last question, hours of operation. So I know it was mentioned in the staff report that you're seeking till 9:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Is, what's the intent for that? Do you intend to have the shop open till 9:00 PM, or is it for occasional events?
Occasional events, but also the idea was, depending on the future of El Toro Loco and their original location, it would, I've talked to them about coordinating in a way to where, you know, they used to have a line out the door of people waiting to get in and eat. And so if we had a really cool shop where they could come by and browse and hang out for 15 minutes and look at some cool shirts, you know, it might work well. So we were kind of mimicking their hours in a way, but it would also open us up to the occasional, you know, small little art show, a small little reveal of a new design. If we have a local scientific author or somebody coming through for signing, it gives us that leeway to be able to have people in the place until nine.
Then that kind of evolved another question for me. Maybe this is better for Mr. Brinkman. Given that there's a potential for someone else to be living above the retail space, or commercial space, rather, are there any features that could be incorporated into the architectural design or the structural design to kind of muckle sound? Because although 9:00 PM isn't that late for, you know, someone like me, if someone has small kids living above this area, 9:00 PM might be pretty late to hear a bunch of noise.
Yeah, the building code provides for requirements for sound transmission for situations like this where you have a residential above a commercial space. And I think, I think they're sufficient for, you know, we have residences in the building I'm in here. We have residences above the commercial spaces here. And the same methods of sound attenuation were used here. And we haven't, there hasn't been any issues that I'm aware of since we've been here.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Those were my questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hauser, did you have some questions for the applicant?
I do, thank you. So I want to understand from, so it looks from the drawings like the commercial space and the residential space are intended to have separate entries. Is that, did I understand that right?
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Are they going to be condominiumized separately? Or how does the ownership structure for the property work?
That's a good question. We own the building. We're going to live above it, and we're going to operate the business below. The only reason we actually aren't having stairs actually inside the structure to directly connect the home to the shop is just because it's such a small structure. It'll eat up half the store space. And so this way, it gets the stairs out of the building. But yeah, there's, I mean, you never say never. You never know what's going to happen in 10 years or 15 years, especially nowadays, right? But we have every intention of staying in this building and operating this store, you know, for, I don't know, until the kids are old enough, they move out.
So, but I think what you're saying is that there is a single property owner and somebody will be a tenant. Or if it's not you owning both of them, let's say you move out of the residential. That residential would be your tenant. There would never be kind of ownership issues.
Between the two spaces.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We will always own the entire.
And then maybe this is a question for Mr. Murdock, but if there was, you know, an application to condominiumize or make two separate legal spaces, would that have to come back for some sort of subdivision?
It would require a city approval of subdivision. That small number of parcels involved may result in a public hearing before the city engineer. It is an option in our municipal code, but some type of public hearing and approval process would be required to approve a condominium.
And then if, you know, if, for example, the applicant expanded into a larger space, and I'm sorry, Mr. Murdock, this is probably for you as well, and a different commercial use went in there, would there need to be another commercial or conditional use permit applied for? Or would the same conditional use permit be an umbrella for multiple users if they were doing similar commercial work?
So whatever approvals may be granted by the planning commission under this application would run with the land, which means that they would remain in effect perpetuity, even if property ownership changed or the businesses changed. With that said, if a different use requiring a use permit was proposed in the space, it would require its own conditional use permit. Or if a, a change of use occurred, even if the use itself may be a permitted use. The zoning standards require certain changes to also obtain a use permit in some circumstances. So there are a variety of instances when an additional use permit may be required. But if a retail use fitting the confines of whatever approval the commission may grant. Came in, but it was operated by different business owners, it would not need to come back before the planning commission.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, as, as far as the really tight property line. On the east side. I want to understand kind of what the thought process was for, um. For maintenance, you know, for, for doing that mural. You know, would you guys as the applicant be willing to pursue some sort of access easement? If one does not exist already over the adjacent property?
Sure, we would definitely do whatever would be needed. Um, I believe, given the space. That I would be able to do any kind of maintenance needed on the painting within eighty percent of it. By simply just kind of leaning over the, the balcony and touching it up. You know, uh, again, we're, we're pretty tight with the family that lives downstairs and we know everybody upstairs. Their young boy comes over and swims in our backyard to play a pool with our girls like. So there's, there's never an issue really with that. And I, I think if anything, I can incorporate their help, you know, get them painting sharks. But I, I, I don't see how it would be an issue with Johnstone, but ever if it was. We would do whatever it would need to be. And if that was, you know, some kind of conditional easement, but, um. I would probably at that point. It is paint over it and paint two large panels that I could remove. So I can do the maintenance on the panels and, uh, in, in my own property without any, you know, need to trouble anybody. Yeah.
Yeah. No, my, it sounds like you have really good relationships with all of your, your neighbors. My, my concern is, you know, when property ownership changes. You know, say it's some person that lives in Oregon that owns the property and they're less, you know, easy dealing. So.
Right.
It's more of the, I just want to.
Yeah, those, it's great for that, sure.
Thank you. Those are, those are all my questions.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions as well. About how many T-shirts a month do you guys sell or anticipate selling in the next couple of years? Give me a sense of the volume of the business.
Sure. Um, it's a good question. So again, we're, we're a pop-up boutique. And so normally we do two days of really intense business at somewhere like Fog Fest or Happy Bay Pumpkin Fest. In which case we range from five to six thousand dollars in sales. The shirts are thirty bucks apiece. So we're looking at about two hundred shirts and the busiest of all weekends with thousands of people walking by. I imagine a really good day in a brick and mortar store here would be twenty shirts. Versus two hundred. And I, I feel like we would probably really be feeling like we're hustling in our own shop if we were moving twenty shirts. So it, it, again, it's hard for me to assess just because we've never been a solid five-day-a-week, seven-day-a-week brick and mortar. But it, taking into account that and then our online sales. You know, i- if we're fortunate, thirty shirts a week, forty shirts a week, maybe fifty. I, I can't imagine it being a whole lot more than that.
So you're saying if you add these numbers together somewhere, ten thousand or less shirts a year?
Yes, yes, by far. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
What about deliveries? What sort of supplies once you put your printer in, do you expect to get? Or if you're working with subcontractors, uh, printing these shirts in San Francisco or whatever you. If I recall correctly, you mentioned. Are there any time limits on these delivery times or?
No, I, I usually always go pick them up in person. Because they're so close and I have a, a working relationship with them. But I also need to check. The, the quality of the product there on the spot. So I usually go to the warehouse. I open the boxes up. I look at the shirts. Because that's my one opportunity to say, I didn't really quite do it right. We're going to have to redo these. It's a little harder to do that if they ship them to me and I'm sitting on them for a bit. That said, you know, there's always the chance I'll get a box of shirts shipped here. Um, and that would go by the same hours as any of our normal Amazon, you know, shipments during the day. The owner of the very large screen printer that I use called Graphic Sportswear, they're in South San Francisco. He's a longtime Pacifica resident. So usually if I can't get there to grab them, he usually delivers them by hand, which is nice. But other, other than that, when we are shipping our own goods with our online store. We either set out a couple for the mailman to grab or we hand deliver them to the post office down the street, down at Manor. Hope that answers the question.
Sure. And finally, do you have a delivery truck or do you anticipate getting one or any sort of delivery vehicle?
No, e- everything, my entire pop-up shop that I travel around setting up is all put in my Honda Ridgeline. Which is also my, my daily grocery getter. That's what I drive to take the girls to school. So. We don't have a van or a work truck or anything like that. We occasionally rent a U-Haul trailer, which, you know, obviously we don't have to store ourselves. So. Yeah, nothing, no large vehicles or anything.
Okay, I think that answers everything I need. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Berman, did you have a, some additional comments or questions?
I have one more question that I forgot to ask. Um, it looks like no one, no one else on the commission has other questions. So. My question that I forgot was privacy related to, um, once you elevate. The living, the dwelling unit. It looks like it'll look straight into the apartments across the way.
Sure.
So I, I know they're separated by probably twenty-five feet. But do you plan to do something for privacy?
Um, at the moment, our property looks directly into the apartments on the bottom floor. And so it's, it's kind of one or the other. We can quite literally look from our bedroom window. Like from our bedroom through multiple windows into our neighbor's living room. And it's something, you know, it's definitely an issue. That I think both of us families a- address in our own way. Blinds, curtains, you know, that general window coverings to help prevent that. I do think there are more windows on the downstairs apartment. And so it'll be slightly reduced as we go up. As far as, you know, be able to look into each other's apartments. But yeah. Where we are, we're, we're actually kind of a fishbowl. Everybody around us kind of looks into our place. And so we, we will be gaining a little bit of privacy by going up finally, which will be nice. But yeah, window coverings like curtains and, and what we have, can't really see it here, but yeah.
Okay, yeah. Um, when I was reviewing the, the staff report. I, I honestly had thought that. Rather than elevating the house up, that it was going to be reconstructed. So I'm really happy that Commissioner Hauser asked that question. Because I was interpreting it differently. In which case, um, my question on privacy was. Effectively going to be, can you arrange the windows to be more private? But now I see that that's likely not the case.
Yeah, wait, one thing that will work in our benefit is the house, as it's being lifted, is going to be pushed back eight feet. So it is going to set a lot of the windows ajar from each other, um, more than there are now. And especially the back of the house will go. Uh, slightly past the back of the apartment building. So those windows won't be looking into their, into their residents at all anymore. If that makes sense. Yeah.
It does. I appreciate that because I, I didn't realize that. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Um, I don't see any other comments or questions right now from the, uh. Planning Commission. So I think what we'll do then is see whether or not we have any public comment or on this item. So I'll. Turn it over to Mr. Murdock to ascertain whether or not we have any public comment.
Thank you, Chair. At this point, there are two members of the public with hands raised. And so I will bring in Yellow Six Zero Nine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Maybe you could state your name for, for us and then go ahead and share your comment.
This is Peter Miller. I'm a forty or so-year Sharp Park resident. I just wanted to point out that, uh, in talking about one eighty-four Paloma that, um. We should just as part of the discussion point out that one eighty-four Paloma is the original Pacifica City Hall. So just from a historical standpoint, uh, it's something, you know, that everybody should be aware of when we're talking about altering this property.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Murdock, do we, could you, uh, call in the next public commenter?
Yes, Chair. Next we have Dawn Hope. I'll bring you in.
Hello, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of this application. Um, I'm a Sharp Park resident as well as a business owner. We have a living room plant company, which is about half a block from this proposed location. As a family that also lives and runs a business in Pacifica, we really know the value of such an investment in Pacifica. We staunchly support it. We think it's a creative and architecturally appropriate use of this property, which is speaking to the preservation. Of a bit of Pacifica history by raising the existing town hall up while also adding to it by giving, um. Retail space below it. Uh, we just find that it, it's a really creative and appropriate use of that space. We also think that it adds a lot of vibrancy to the neighborhood by using visual arts. We love the mural. Uh, we'd love to see more of that. Being visitor-use friendly area, um. We believe it really adds diversity, much-needed diversity to the existing retail options, not only just in Sharp Park, but Pacifica as a whole. In taking some notes on some of the comments, speaking to the parking, uh, we're at sixteen fourteen Paloma and all along our side, which is. Northbound as well as southbound, there's ample parking. There's always empty spaces. We have a green curb in front of our shop and then there's an unmarked, I guess it's limitless. Parking across the street that always has open spaces, which is less than, like I said, about half a block from, uh, their location. Also to speak to the sound after nine P M. We, we're a retail business with residents above us and we have also had. On, on occasion workshops and private events that go, um, to the nine P M range and we've never had any complaints. And, um, it's been, actually adds a lot of vibrancy and. The community loves it. The community loves having a place to meet and it, it adds, adds to the neighborhood, I believe. To speak to the retail sales, um, I know you guys are a pop-up and so you're trying to gauge, you know, what your sales would be since. We've been in business a year and a half as a retail space. We sell plants. And T-shirts with your art on it, which is great. And, and really popular. I can tell you that we're doing an average of fifteen to thirty customers a day. It's going to be more on weekends. Less during the week, no Mondays when, uh, everything is closed. And finally, I just want to say that we really value this family's investment in Pacifica. The residents, they have a business, they support local businesses. And the investment is so substantial, we really hope this gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope, for your comments. Um, Mr. Murdock, any other comments?
Yes, Chair, we have one more speaker, Mark Hubble. Brought you into the meeting. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Hubble.
Hi, I'd just like to say that, um. I've known AJ for a while and have worked with projects, um, with him and I really like his creativity and his, uh, vision for Pacifica. I think he's a real straight-up guy. Um, I have another friend, AJ reminds me of him, who started a T-shirt shop in San Francisco. Called Babylon Burning in the sixties. And that, um. Business just a couple of years ago, one was awarded the, uh, San Francisco Historic Business. Certification. So, you know, these things can be very important.
Thank you, Mr. Hubble. Uh, Mr. Murdock, do we have any other comments?
We do. We have one more hand raised. Tyler, uh, rather, Taylor Algren, please go ahead.
Hi there, Taylor Algren here. Um, brand new resident, uh, to Sharp Park. Moved here, uh, with my, uh, wife just a week ago. And I'm excited to participate in the commission, um, as a new resident. Very supportive of this project and I would, uh, love the, to deal with the parking issue just coming from San Francisco. Most recently, a lot of, um, the thinking around parking was to, how can we provide, uh, transportation alternatives? And I understand, um, the general plan, you know, has some guidelines, but I would love, uh, you know, I'm, I'm here in Sharp Park without any vehicle. And I'll be exclusively walking and using a bicycle for transportation. So I'd love to, um, you know, have the planning commission consider, uh, parking alternatives where. Constraints such as one eighty-four Paloma are presenting themselves. Um, and I'd love for, you know, four bicycle, uh, parking spaces to be provided on the property. In lieu of, uh, four parking spaces so that people can be welcomed, uh, through bicycles and other means of transportation besides. Besides vehicles. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Eldren, for your comments. Uh, Mr. Murdock, any other comments?
I don't see any other hands right now, Chair. Just a reminder, star nine for any of those, uh, members of the public who are dialed in by phone. Or click the button to raise your hand if you'd like to speak on this agenda item. And I see no additional hands raised at this time.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Murdock. We'll go ahead then and close the public hearing and bring the matter. Back to the, uh, well, actually, let me, let me take a step back. Um, uh, if the applicants wanted to, uh. You know, take, let's say a minute to, to respond to any comment that was, uh, raised in the course of public comment, the applicants can do so.
Sorry, I had to find the unmute button. I, I do love the comment about City Hall. It is something that we were told when we bought the place. We didn't quite believe it until we saw it in the history books. The building is not historical. Uh, it's. As cool as that history is, uh, it, it, and it's very much why we are preserving the building. Uh, don't get me wrong, we, we've had plenty of contractor friends and people say. Why would you pick the house up? That seems a little crazy. Why don't you just take the roof off and add on all another story to it? I, we, we feel the damage that would do to the building, both and it's just overall static. It, and integrity, because it's an old building. Really wouldn't be the right choice. And so it was my idea to, to lift the entire building as it is, preserve it pretty much entirely. To then create the, the, you know, first floor of commercial space. But yeah, I just wanted to comment on that because I, I do think that's a, a cool historic detail. It was actually the City Hall of Salada Beach, the town, before incorporation. One of the point of that, it wasn't City Hall here. It was in a different location when it was City Hall. Which I believe is over by Oceania Market going off of the history books. So. It was moved to this present state after it was City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay, well, then we're going to go ahead and bring the matter back to the Planning Commission and, uh. I'll go ahead and ask my colleagues if anybody wants to, uh. Start the conversation. Commissioner Biggs.
Sure, thank you. And my colleagues have asked all the really good questions. Um, I just did hear that one question from, um. From a member of the community about bicycle parking. So I was just wondering if, um. Staff or even the applicant might address, uh, whether bicycle parking is feasible in this location.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Biggs.
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Bigstick. The project does provide two bicycle parking spaces as required by the municipal code. So the bicycle parking standard in our code is ten percent of vehicle parking spaces or two bicycle parking spaces, whichever is greater. In this case, with such a small parking standard required for the overall project, the applicant is required to provide the two bicycle parking spaces. They have proposed a bicycle rack at the front right of the project site. It's shown on Plan Sheet A 1.1.
A member of the community referenced four spaces instead of two. Is that something that could happen, or would that require too much space at that point?
I think I would ask the applicant to discuss options for additional parking if they wanted to voluntarily provide it. I think, I understood the member of the public to be making an aspirational statement saying, "You'd better have bicycle parking instead of vehicle parking spaces." But as far as code requirements, the project would comply with the city's code requirements for bicycle.
Mr. Rankin or Mr. Gregory, do you have any comment on whether or not more bicycle would be something that you're interested in pursuing? Or are we good where we are?
I think we'd be definitely interested in it if the space allows, obviously. We are getting pretty tight up front with the two parking spaces. A safe walkway to the front door, that's successful for everyone, and then the two existing bike parking spaces, you know, that there are now in the plan. I've been sitting here brainstorming. I'm sure we could come up with something really cool and creative. We do have these bump outs that I've adopted and turned into gardens, so they could be really cool artistic sculpture.
Octopus.
Yeah, an octopus that you can park your bike next to and lock it up. But that sounds like that would take a whole other hearing, so it's something we would, it's something we would definitely love to do if possible. We're both bicyclists. Jack used to ride or bike across the country. So, yeah, we love that idea.
I thank you for incorporating the standards as they are, and I don't think another condition of approval is necessary, but it's a great idea that the community might be interested in more bicycle space if, when the time comes, you find yourself able to do that.
For sure.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick. Commissioner Hauser.
One quick question for staff. So with the mural that's being proposed, I saw that there would need to be a sign permit, but would that need to go technically to the VAC or to one of the other committee commissions?
Not to my knowledge and understanding of the mural policy, given this is a private mural on private property for business purposes. It would be under the regulatory authority of the planning commission with issuance of a sign permit, which is one of the requested entitlements at this hearing.
Thank you. So, you know, just my comments and my thoughts on this, I, you know, I think the parking was well addressed. And I think, you know, you make a good point on the historic, you're lifting up the building, so even if it was historic, you're honoring it in the best, the best possible way. I think, you know, I spent a lot of time on the Economic Development Committee talking about how important it is to get small businesses and local businesses in Pacifica. So I really appreciate all the effort and work that went in, and I also think that the project in and of itself is really cool. My two-and-a-half-year-old is going to love the Sharp mural. With that, with that being said, I do feel, you know, I know I said this, I do feel a little bit of concern about future ownership issues and property issues. I don't really know what the solution is for that, except maybe encouraging you to make sure that you feel comfortable and that staff feel comfortable on the back end with something that doesn't create property ownership issues in the future for access. But overall, you know, pending what the other commissioners have to say, I feel fairly good about this project, and I appreciate all the effort that went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Berman?
Yeah, just echoing Commissioner Hauser's applause on just welcoming small business and pursuing small business. And I also love that the building is to be City Hall, and although I don't think it needs to be a condition of approval or anything, but I think it would be really great to incorporate some history, some Pacifica history associated with the house. I don't know if that's like a little plaque somewhere, but that would be.
Don't get him started. He's wanted a plaque for like six years.
Yeah, I've wanted a big plaque out front for a while, but, you know, we've been rolling over this idea now for three years, and so I've always thought, do this, get this done, and then we'll have a really nice plaque up front, or maybe even just a plaque in the shop to show the before and after pictures or whatever. But definitely, we're going to address the history of the building for sure. I used to be a member of the Pacifica Historical Society. I talked to them all about it. They were super excited that we had this building. Yeah.
Great. I do have two concerns. I don't think they're going to stop us from likely approving this project tonight, but my first concern is the logistics of elevating the house.
Sure.
I want to make sure, especially because the single-family home to the west is so close. Heaven forbid if something went wrong, and so I don't know if that's in the purview of the planning commission, but for the record, I just want to make sure that during the permitting process moving forward, that the means and methods of construction are very closely looked at for this. And then my other item of concern is the triple combined driveway idea. Effectively, it would be potentially sixty, seventy, or sixty-something feet, I don't know how wide we took the driveways are, of just, what, five to eight percent angle cross slope, which certainly isn't ADA compliance, and that, I mean, it's just not a good experience to walk across those three properties. And then also, I'm slightly concerned with just cars accidentally driving into things. If all of that is flush and able for a car to drive up on it, I don't know if someone's not paying attention and drives into the fence or drives into, I don't know what, a pedestrian that's walking or standing on the sidewalk. So I'm wondering if any, if staff or the applicant or any other commissioners might have ideas for better addressing those three driveways, and are those bollards are appropriate?
Brian, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, I could say a couple of things. There's definitely that concern. I mean, we do have the large driveways it is next to us, and so we're always very cautious when we're crossing it with our daughters, because there are a lot of cars that come and go out of that driveway. But everyone that lives around here knows there's a lot of kids and a lot of foot traffic, so people go very slowly in and out of the entrances of the driveways around here. I think if anything, what would end up happening is the sidewalk would be improved dramatically, because the sidewalk to the west of us, in front of our next-door neighbor to the west, is incredibly damaged from the existing, or the old Cypress tree that used to be there. And so what's happening is pedestrians are actually walking out into the street to go around that damaged spot. That's how bad it is. And so hopefully, what we could do is when we get all that flattened out and turned into a curb and whatnot, we could also address that issue, since there's going to have to be work done over there anyways. So hopefully, the end result will be an improved walkway through this portion of the sidewalk. I'm not an expert enough to come up with any other solutions to really address that, so.
Commissioner Berman, I also want to add, I'm sympathetic to your concern about, we'll call it the historical or conventional type of driveway approach. I'm certainly not qualified to speak authoritatively about it, but my working knowledge is such that the city's Public Works Department has a newer, modernized standard plan for driveway approaches, which actually strives to maintain an accessible cross slope wherever feasible, based on site conditions. And so I think there's a good chance, which I cannot guarantee, given the grades existing in the area, but there's a good chance that the design of the new driveway approach and what's in effect the sidewalk that's traversing that area will be very much, very likely be accessible, or at the very least closer to accessibility than the more conventional or traditional type of driveway approach.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. I'm wondering, do we need to incorporate anything into our motion that adds the two adjacent driveways for improvement on this project?
I don't think so. I think I would prefer that the commission remain silent on that and defer to the city engineer. The public right-of-way is in the city engineer's purview. And so it is something that they look at and require information to be submitted about adjacent properties within a certain distance of a project site, so they can look at those public improvements in totality, ensure that the design of the approach and the sidewalk and the curb and gutter and all of that is consistent and compliant with applicable standard plans.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lille?
Hi, thank you, Chair. So overall, I think this is a great project and a great improvement for the neighborhood. But I do want to bring up the concern that was just mentioned, actually, by the applicant about the sidewalk next door. So as I was walking near this property today, I nearly tripped on that sidewalk in question. And as I think of parking and the exceptions related to this project, in addition to just overall pedestrian flow to and from the location, I think that parking, that sidewalk would, will maybe used more. And given that piece of sidewalk is actually in front of the neighbor's house, so I don't know how much we could do here for this project, but I just want to raise it as a point, and it sounded like, Aaron, you're open to improving that?
Absolutely.
And making that improvement, so I don't know if we want a similar point that Commissioner Berman made. I don't know if we want to add anything to the commission, to the condition of approval here, or if we leave it up to the city and the city engineering department to make sure that that's resolved as well as part of the project.
Commissioner Lille, I think it would be my preference, from the staff perspective, to not seek to require this project applicant to fix the sidewalk abutting in adjacent property. For starters, the obligation to maintain the sidewalk is that of the abutting property owner under state law. And so there is a process the city can follow to bring the property owner to repair the sidewalk. I think, second point, is that it is entirely possible that when applying the standard plan to achieve the appropriate grades for accessibility, to implement the city's standard plan, it's possible this sidewalk may need to be altered by this project applicant, but that would be in the scope of implementing a standard requirement triggered by this particular project. But we don't have sufficient information to determine right now whether that sidewalk would in fact need to be altered. And so I think leaving all options available, perhaps first and foremost, having the city reach out to the abutting property owner to construct the improvement, and then secondly, to see if it's within the scope of improvements required to implement the standard plan for the project site driveway. I think I'd prefer that process to play out that way if possible.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Lille. I had just a couple of maybe comments, questions. Generally, I think the project is one that, well, I think it's well-conceived, and I'm generally in support of it. I was a little concerned, you know, kind of dovetailing on some of the comments of my colleagues about sort of the notion of the project, maybe not coming to be owned by different parties, but maybe occupied by different parties. I don't really have any issue with the hours of operation or, you know, conditions around special events if the owners are, you know, are the same, and the occupants are the same, you know, the same folks upstairs and downstairs, so to speak. I'm a little concerned about the hours of operation, candidly, if we get a different set of folks upstairs, for example. If you all go to live somewhere else for whatever reason, and you've got tenants who might not be as happy to have folks, you know, doing business up until nine o'clock at night, for example.
Absolutely.
Or even seven o'clock, frankly, on a weekday. So, you know, certainly, again, given current arrangements and arrangements as proposed, I don't have any particular issue with the hours of operation. Frankly, I don't care how long it goes on, as long as it doesn't bother folks who are living in adjacent properties. But, but again, I'm wondering if, and maybe this is more directed to the city attorney and staff, whether or not the conditions of approval could be modified such that if you had a non-commonality of sort of occupancy with respect to the residential and the commercial uses on the property, the hours of operation might be constrained in some way such that they were shorter than, for example, nine o'clock on weekends, or maybe that's standard for, you know, what happens in that particular area anyway, in which instance, maybe, notwithstanding my discomfort, it's just the way, you know, sort of commercial space operates there. And so maybe a little more information actually would be useful.
Sure, thank you, Chair. I'll take a shot at addressing part of your question, and then perhaps defer to Ms. Bazano for any other considerations. I think it's my perspective that, living in a mixed-use development, you either accept or don't accept that close intimate relationship with the commercial use that's below. And I think the right tenant would find it as an exciting opportunity to live in a particular location, and someone else that values complete quiet and peacefulness perhaps wouldn't choose to live in that location. I think it's really a landlord-tenant situation to be resolved, and the right person or family would accept it, and then the wrong family perhaps would not choose to live there. I think also, as you consider this decision in the framework of other decisions the planning commission's made, I believe it has authorized other hours of operation, consistent with this, around that eight or nine o'clock hour, potentially later, but I think perhaps nine o'clock for other mixed-use projects, not specific to the overall development, but authorizing, for example, cannabis retail operations on the ground floor of existing mixed-use buildings. And so I think, again, as it came up in that context, in those discussions, it was understood that it was really a landlord-tenant type of situation to be managed. And if a particular business operator was making too much noise, that's an issue for the landlord to regulate. Similarly, making the fact that there is a business below clear when leasing to a tenant is also an important obligation of a property owner. Perhaps Ms. Bazano has some additional thoughts about how the city might be able to address that through conditions, however.
Right, I would just reiterate and agree with what Mr. Murdoch just said. I was going to point out the planning commission's previous actions relating to the mixed use relating to cannabis, but Mr. Murdoch beat me to it. So I think that, also, I would add that the hours of operation would run with the land, so that if there's any potential transfer, those hours of operations would continue with, to run with the, the conditions would continue to run with the land and be applicable to any use by a future owner. So the hours aren't going to change, and assuming that a landlord conveys the hours of operation to a potential resident upstairs, I don't see any problem with that in the future. But certainly, if you have further concerns, we can discuss further, but at this point, I don't see how that would be, could be a detriment to it.
Well, thank you for that. I guess my other question then is kind of specific to the condition of approval that deals with special events. And that's a very specific condition that pertains very specifically to the particular use that the applicants intend to make of the property. And I gather that if we ended up with a different tenant below, we, that condition of approval might or might not be problematic. It might suggest that there wouldn't be any special events unless, you know, that applicant happened to be, or I'm sorry, that user happened to be the kind of tenant who was interested in book signings or illustration workshops or presentations by naturalists, so.
It's very narrow, yes.
Yeah, so I'm gathering that, you know, it would just be ordinary, non-special event, you know, sort of commercial use, so to speak. I just want to make sure I kind of understand how those things work together, particularly in the context, again, of a tenant, a commercial tenant who is not in the same sort of space as our applicants here.
Yeah, it's a great question, Chair. So I think the important point to the special events from staff's perspective is the trigger in the municipal code for the change of use abutting a residential district. And so I think it's our intention, based And so I think it's our intention, based on the applicant's project description, to not go beyond those special events that have been described in order to minimize potential impacts to the abutting residential district. And so certainly, it would be within the ability of a future business owner to seek an amendment to this use permit, or his or her own use permit to authorize a different type of activity, which would further change the use abutting in our district. So I think staff felt comfortable with the nature of these particular special events. If they were, you know, DJ, dance party, special events to promote the brand, you know, that may have the potential for a different range of impacts on the abutting our district. In this case, from staff's perspective anyways, based on its understanding, the relatively benign and limited impacts of book signings and the types of special events that were described, as well as their hours of operation within the umbrella hours authorized for the business, left us feeling comfortable with the arrangement and not wanting to go beyond that.
And I'm tracking you, and I, I think that I, I share that sense of comfort. I just want to make sure that, you know, what is this applicant's special event isn't some other users or some other tenants' ordinary commercial activity. And, and so just wanting to, to be clear, want the record to be clear on, on that point. So, in any event, Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out the very close proximity with winters. I would almost be in some instances more concerned about the very loud music and other raucous activity going on probably past nine o'clock on a weekend time. And I know even during pandemic season, they, I think up to 10 o'clock, will have events in their backyard going on right now. So that, that's almost more of a concern to me. And if the neighborhood can tolerate that kind of noise activity, I'm not, I, I think the hours of operation as stated probably are well in alignment with where the neighborhood currently is at. So I, you know, I think we first heard the idea of this during the LCP update, and it immediately occurred to me as bearing, being a very cool idea and a very cool potential project. And I really like the vibe of this project overall. The concerns of my fellow commissioners are well taken, and at the end of the meeting, I'll vote in alignment with the consensus on safety concerns. It's a pretty tight space and whatnot. But overall, I, I think it's a very cool, very interesting project. Mr. Brinkman, even when I don't always lean towards the project, I think that you're pretty much always involved with very interesting, very cool projects and ones that are very attractive. So I, I wanted to state that overall, I'm very much in, in favor of this. I think that as we're discussing later on, the Sharp Park specific plan, in general, this is very much exactly the kind of project I, I would think that we would want to bring into the, the area. So again, I'm, I'm sensitive to concerns that have been raised about safety and whatnot. I don't know which way commission's going to go at the end of the night. I'm going to vote in consensus with safety, but in general, I very much like this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick, Commissioner Hauser.
Um, so I, I've been listening to all of the other commissioners, and particularly with the safety concerns from Commissioner Berman and what Commissioner Big Stick just echoed. I'm wondering if kind of a mutual solution to my property rights and the safety concern would be some, a, a condition that wasn't prohibitive, but maybe left it in the, in the hands of staff, so that it just was something that kind of stayed on the radar that we were paying attention to. So I, I don't know how, how the commission would feel about asking the applicant to provide a safety plan during construction and a plan for maintenance of the eastern property line to the satisfaction of city staff. I think that if that condition or something akin to it was added, that I would be willing to support the project with no other changes personally. But I, I would ask what everybody feels about that.
Commissioner Berman.
I'd be in favor of that. When I presented my concerns, the applicant, Mr. Murdock, kind of reassured me that my concerns will be thoughtfully addressed during the natural permitting process. So I felt comfortable regardless. But if the rest of the commission and staff wanted to add another condition, I'd be in favor of that as well.
Well, maybe I would propose that Commissioner Hauser make a, make a motion along the lines that she was thinking, maybe adding, again, terminology along the lines that she was just sharing as a, as an additional condition, see if we can get a second and see where that goes. Commissioner Hauser.
Yes, I, I would be willing to make that motion. And if it pleases the Chair, I'll do it right now. So I'll make a motion to approve that the planning commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act approved site development permit PSD-847-19, coastal development permit CDP-418-19, use permit UP-121-19, parking exception PE-188-19, and sign permit S-132-20 by adopting the attached resolution including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, subject to incorporating an additional condition that the applicant shall provide a safety plan during construction and a plan for maintenance of the eastern property line to the satisfaction of city staff, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Hauser. Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Big Stick, I see your hand up. Are you seconding the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, well, let me take a second before we vote on it. I wanted to ask staff to comment on the motion, in case there was any fine tuning they wanted to do, the language, or they had any material concerns about the motion as stated.
Thank you, Chair. I was interjecting for that same purpose. I would ask the maker of the motion if she would accept a timing component to set this prior to issuance of a building permit.
I would definitely accept that.
Commissioner Big Stick, would you second that as, as amended? Okay, I think you said I will. Great. So we've got a, a motion to second. Does everybody?
Quick question before we vote. I know Commissioner Hauser, you mentioned maintenance of the eastern property line. What's, what's intended by that specifically?
Sure. The intention is that with a two-inch setback, that the new commercial space, outdoor stairwell and mural or, or piece of public art requires access onto an adjoining property owner's land where rights do not currently exist, and easement for that access does not currently exist to, I think, staff or the applicant's knowledge. So that either some sort of access right would be gained, or that the applicant can demonstrate the methods, the means and methods by which they would actually do the maintenance from their own property line.
Okay. Yeah, the only item that I disagree with is the, the access rights and easement would have to be coordinated, designed, and granted with the adjacent property, not this one.
Exactly. And that's, that's why I'm trying to incorporate flexibility, that whatever that maintenance plan is, it's something that staff is comfortable with. If it's not an access easement, that's fine, too. But just, just the idea that if you're building what, what technically is a zero law line, you know, that there's some thought into how to go about making sure that if building materials need to be replaced or fixed, or stucco needs to be redone in, you know, five or 10 years, that there's a mechanism to do that.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I just don't want to end up with a condition that requires an adjacent property owner to do something. I don't know if city attorney wants to advise.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Yes, so I, I maybe would like to clarify, because I did not hear that access was an issue, that, that the, I heard that the applicant felt that there was sufficient space to maintain the property line. And I would just clarify that this is not a public mural, this is a private mural. And so obviously, the obligation to maintain the property falls to the property owner. And if the mural is somehow not kept in a manner that is appropriate or compatible with the municipal code, the city would then be able to enforce provisions of the municipal code relating to nuisance. But, but at this point, I haven't heard anything that would support a need for maintenance of the eastern property line. So maybe we could clarify that first.
Oh, i- i- if I might, I, I mean, what I was gathering was that the condition of approval was really, it wasn't, it doesn't require, in particular, as Commissioner Hauser noted, that we actually negotiate, that anything being negotiated with the adjacent property owner, what is required is a showing to the reasonable satisfaction of the, of, of city staff, that there actually is a, a plan for, for maintenance if and when it's needed. I, I don't, I, I think it's entirely plausible, at some point in the future, maintenance will be needed. And given the very, you know, small setback, it doesn't seem like an unreasonable condition to, 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 to again, require.
I just, so we, we don't typically impose that type of condition unless there is, I mean, so what I would like to see is, or hear is that there is some underlying access problem. So maybe we could clarify with the applicant, or clarify that there was some discussion in the record that would support that type of condition.
Well, I, I, it strikes me that we're dealing with an extraordinarily small setback of, what, a couple of inches? I don't know. Commissioner Hauser, you can perhaps better speak to this than me.
Sure. So it's, it's a two-inch setback. And during discussion and my questions to the applicant, there was a comment that approximately 80% of that could probably be maintained from the current property line as, as designed. And so the question then is what happens to the 20%? And, you know, I, I understand that that's probably an estimation at this point, and maybe everything can be maintained properly, but I think that it does warrant a little bit more thought. And I don't think adding a condition that leaves it at staff's discretion to just make sure that that thought has been given would be overly cumbersome. My, my goal is, and I want to say this for the record, my goal is not to create a, in some sort of cumbersome burden for the applicant that's impossible. My goal is just to make sure that everyone thinks this through, so that we don't get left, you know, with some sort of property ownership issue in, in 10 years or five years.
So if I may, Commissioner Hauser, your, your condition of approval only speaks to the 20% that was identified as potentially being inaccessible or difficult to access by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there, there were two components of the condition. The safety plan during construction would apply to everything. And then the, the maintenance for the eastern property line would apply to the 20% of concern.
And it's not, your, your proposed condition of approval is not specific to the mural itself, it's to just the eastern property line and that 20%?
Correct, because it's not just the mural, it's the commercial staircase and the exterior wall of the ground floor commercial building that are at the two inches.
Okay, understood. Well, thank you for that clarification, Commissioner Hauser.
Okay, well, we have a motion, and it's been seconded. And I think then we can go ahead and go to the roll call vote on the motion.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
That's it.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I, I think before we move to the next item, I, just because the next item is not a, a public hearing, it's a consideration item, I, I want to note that anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision became, becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. Okay, that will then take us to consideration items, and the item that we have for consideration is file number 2020007, Sharp Park Specific Plan Guiding Policy Framework Discussion. The recommended sequel action here is not applicable, since this is not a project pursuant to sequel guideline section 15378. And the recommended action of staff is for the commission to provide direction on guiding policy framework. So can we have a staff report, please?
Chair Niblin, before we continue, I just want to state that I have a conflict of interest due to ownership of real property in this location, so I need to recuse myself from this item. My understanding is in order to do that, I need to turn off my video and stay on mute. So we'll do that.
I'll ask the city attorney to confirm that that's the, that's the appropriate process.
Right, so Commissioner Lille will now turn off his video and mute himself for the duration of the item.
Thank you, Ms. Bazano. I, I think we're, looks like he's done that, so I think we're ready to go ahead and hear the, hear the staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners. I'm senior planner Christian Murdock. Staff is excited to bring before you this evening a discussion of the Sharp Park specific plan. Tonight's discussion is a resumption of the Plan Pacifica process, which had been gaining momentum in 2019 through early 2020, until the onset of the COVID-19 public health emergency. Allison Moore from our consultant Diet and Batia will make a more detailed presentation in a moment, but I want to outline two key points ahead of time. First, this meeting was intended to occur on March 16th, following the January 29th public meeting at the Little Brown Church. The meeting would have felt a bit more timely if it had occurred in March as planned. So we're working to rebuild community excitement for the Plan Pacifica process and Sharp Park specific plan in particular, as well as refresh everybody's memory with where we have been and where we are going. The second point is that the input we receive from the planning commission this evening is critical to development of the full Sharp Park specific plan. The three main areas where staff is seeking input on housing density, building height, and bicycle and pedestrian connection, are also the areas where the community had a variety of viewpoints during the January community meeting and subsequent online survey. Staff is hoping the planning commission can consider all of the feedback received and provide direction on how to proceed with respect to these key elements of the plan. So with that introduction, I will turn the presentation over to Allison Moore of Diet and Batia. Allison?
Thank you, Christian. Just give me one second to set up my presentation. Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yeah, I think we can.
Great. Okay. So this evening, I'd like to start by recapping the Sharp Park specific plan process, public outreach to date, touch on some of the issues and opportunities surrounding some of the main concepts that Christian mentioned that have emerged as part of this process, and a discussion of preferred approaches for each of these concepts, especially as they relate to the Sharp Park specific plan guiding policy framework. So just as a refresher, the Sharp Park neighborhood has been identified as an area with potential for evolution and growing vibrancy over the next several decades, and has been envisioned as a major community center for Pacifica. The Sharp Park specific plan will be a tool for development and preservation in the Sharp Park area, which encompasses the blocks around Palmetto Avenue between Paloma and Clarendon, as well as Eureka Square. The specific plan will help the city guide the future of Sharp Park in a direction that the community wants, and offer policy direction for land use, economic development, mobility, urban design. And this will make it easier for these goals to be achieved by providing clear guidelines and policies. This specific plan effort is part of and will be consistent with the update of the Pacifica General Plan and the local coastal program. So we wrapped up the visioning and issue identification phase of this process, which culminated in an existing conditions report and market analysis available online on the project website. We've also engaged with members of the community to learn about issues and opportunities and establish a foundation for the plan's vision and goals. And now that the plan- And now that the planning team has an understanding of this vision, we're exploring land use connectivity and urban design strategies to make this a reality. Preferred strategies will be incorporated into the guiding policy framework, which will provide general direction for more detailed specific plan policies and implementing actions later on. So public outreach in the visioning phase included multiple channels of input, including initial brainstorming and visioning at the five neighborhood meetings July of last year. Can't believe it's been that long. We've also had group interviews and focused discussions with various Sharp Park stakeholders, as well as an online existing conditions survey, um, in which we had over a hundred and twenty participants. People described a vision of Palmetto as a vibrant main street with new housing opportunities, a mix of uses and exciting retail, pleasant and walkable public realm, and a character that's reflective of and sensitive to the area's coastal and historic amenities. There have been two major public outreach initiatives in the second phase so far. We had a concepts workshop in January, in which over a hundred and twenty people attended, and an online concept survey which received over three hundred and fifty responses. So we've had a pretty great public response. So the concepts workshop, that refined the themes that emerged in the first phase into three key concepts. Vibrancy, so building a sharp park that is vibrant, has a mix of uses. Great places, enhancing sharp park is an area that's unique. Um, and getting around, so preferably by foot, bike, or non-auto mode in a way that's comfortable and enjoyable. So the workshop presented a few ways in which these concepts could come to life. So for example, with vibrancy, we talked about how acting, activating the ground floor of certain mixed uses would be important. Why mixed use generally is important to the area, um, as Ms. Hope and Mr. Gregory described tonight about the contribution of their mixed use businesses to the atmosphere of Sharp Park. We touched on density, um, and other topics. And in facilitated groups, participants were asked to consider which options or approaches to achieve these concepts were most preferable to them. So there, these were just a few of the approaches where there was general consensus. Uh, but as Christian mentioned, there still remain differences in opinion about three topics: the right density along Palmetto, appropriate heights for various parts of the planning area, and the preferred location for an enhanced bicycle and pedestrian connection that would connect the east and west of the planning area. So to get clarity, a focused online concept survey was released to hone in on what people's preferences were. And we'd appreciate, uh, planning commission input on these issues today. So the first question in the survey was about density on Palmetto. So one of the proposed approaches to achieving vibrancy and creating a critical mass of people and businesses along Palmetto would include an increase in density through a land use change, um, along Palmetto. As part of the local coastal land use plan certification draft, there are two mixed use land, land use designations, mixed use neighborhood and mixed use center. So mixed use neighborhood would allow for more, sorry, mixed use center would allow for more housing units and more commercial space to be built on a parcel and mixed use neighborhood. However, to achieve this development potential, mixed use center would require heights over thirty-five feet, the current height limit for the city. Other factors would determine what buildings look like in their full capacity, including parking, the type of commercial development, unit size, and, um, other design requirements. Um, so this rendering shows what could potentially be built on a point-three acre site. So on the left, we can see a mixed use neighborhood designation rendering that could result in seven units and four thousand eight hundred square feet of commercial space. A mixed use center designation would result in twice the number of housing units and five thousand five hundred fifty square feet of commercial space. And it's expected that units in the mixed use center designation would mostly be a mix of studios and one to two bedrooms. So the survey asked respondents to, to indicate which type of land use designation or density would be preferred along Palmetto. Mixed use center along the entirety of Palmetto, mixed use center along the southern part of Palmetto, which was provided as an option because this is where several opportunity areas such as the library site and two-two-one-two Beach Boulevard are located, or an option to keep Palmetto mixed use neighborhood. It was made clear that mixed use center would require heights over thirty-five feet. And as you can see in these results, respondents were split between mixed use center versus keeping Palmetto mixed use neighborhood. Though when you add the total of entirety of Palmetto and southern part of Palmetto, it's, um, slightly more than fifty percent. So as noted in the staff report tonight, um, staff would like input and your consideration for three options. A mixed use center designation to Southern Palmetto Avenue only. A mixed use center designation to Southern Palmetto Avenue, but allowed increased heights along Northern Palmetto. And mixed use designation to Olive Palmetto, but only allowing projects in Northern Palmetto that maximize affordable housing production. And I'm sure we'll recap these, um, once I finish the presentation. The second survey question was about height and which building heights would be appropriate in different locations. So currently, the city's height limit is thirty-five feet, as I mentioned. Uh, and to, as I noted before, to fully achieve development potential, most properties with a mixed use center designation would require a minimum height of four stories or forty-five feet. So as such, height is a component in, in an increasing vibrancy and activity in the area. Additional height could also free up ground area for additional public realm improvements, such as outdoor seating or dining. So Francisco Boulevard, the two-two-one-two Beach Boulevard site, which is council chambers, and the Eureka Square complex were proposed as areas with a mixed use center designation. The survey also noted that there was about a ten-foot difference in elevation between North and South Palmetto. And respondents were asked to evaluate appropriate heights of these areas in addition to North and South Palmetto. And based on people's responses to the density question, they were shown a different set of height choices. So if someone selected mixed use centers being appropriate on a certain part of Palmetto, they could not select thirty-five feet, for example. So that confusion was, um, avoided. So this bar chart shows aggregated responses to the height question for each area. Bars on the left of each category, the light blue, represent preference for a height of thirty-five feet. Bars on the right represent heights that are greater than thirty-five feet in aggregate. So more than half of the respondents were supportive of heights above thirty-five feet on North Palmetto, South Palmetto, two-two-one-two Beach Boulevard, and Eureka Square. Though, though there were some concerns about height at two-two-one-two Beach Boulevard, uh, because of coastal resiliency. And, uh, planning staff can talk more about conversations with the coastal commission, um, later on. There is no majority opinion expressed regarding heights along Francisco Boulevard. Nearly an equal share of respondents preferred heights up to thirty-five feet, forty, forty-nine percent of, uh, respondents as the preferred heights above thirty-five feet, forty-five percent. So as noted in the staff report, uh, staff recommends consideration of two options. Either allowing heights up to forty-five feet on Olive Palmetto and Francisco, and up to fifty-five feet at two-two-one-two Beach Boulevard, the library site, and at Eureka Square. Or if it's probable to create incentives for affordable housing production by granting additional height above forty-five feet to projects that exceed current inclusionary housing ordinance requirements, which is fifteen percent affordable. The third question asks participants about a prioritized east-west bicycle connection through Sharp Park. So over the last few years, Sharp Park has seen significant bicycle and pedestrian connectivity improvements, especially the new pedestrian walkway at San Jose Avenue and all of the improvements along Palmetto. So to build on these improvements and increase navigability of the area, especially for tourists and people who may be coming to the area for the first time, it makes sense to prioritize certain streets for wayfinding and bicycle and pedestrian improvements. These could include landscaping, bicycle infrastructure, signage, or other improvements to better connect the corridors of activity and reduce disruption to residential neighborhoods. A minimized distance between corridors also will help to encourage walking. So the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan identifies Paloma Avenue and Clarendon, um, as streets where bicycle boulevards could be added. And the survey gave people the option of prioritizing a street, um, with a short statement about, uh, rationale. I'm actually going to go back. So for example, a prioritized connection at San Jose would definitely benefit from the connection to the pedestrian bridge. Santa Rosa has great visual access to the pier, et cetera. Um, respondents preferred prioritization of a connection across the Sharp Park area, mainly in the southern part of the neighborhood, although no single street gained close to a majority of responses. But you can see that Clarendon, um, and Montecito were, were ranked the most highly out of all of the choices. So there are various ways, um, for how a connection could be prioritized. So in thinking about these, um, you could prioritize three, three connections in the north part of Sharp Park, the, the southern part of Sharp Park, and in the middle. And this would minimize walking distance for nearly every point of the planning area. Or alternatively, prioritization could be based on options selected by participants or based on recommendations in the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Or just one could be prioritized, uh, probably either Santa Rosa Avenue or San Jose Avenue. Montecito staff is not recommending because it has grade issues. However, the idea of a connection near that southern development, um, was resonant to people. So guidance on these three issues is important because it will inform the Sharp Park Specific Plan's general guiding policy framework, which will guide development of, uh, more specific guiding and implementing policies later on. And guiding prin, sorry, guiding policies are the city's statements of broad direction, philosophy, or standards to be achieved. Implementing policies are going to be specific statements that, that say how the guiding policies will be achieved. So while, while the guiding policy framework is not totally comprehensive at this point, it reflects community input up to this time. And these policies will be supplemented with additional ones and more detail at subsequent stages, uh, to provide greater depth and comprehen, comprehensiveness. And other issues that we'll consider in more depth will include parking, of course, coastal resilience, and urban design. Um, so here's an example of how we get from concepts that we, we talked about earlier to an implementing policy. The concept of vibrancy, it, uh, is related to critical mass. How do we build, um, foot traffic, residence, businesses, different types of uses along Palmetto? The guiding policy would be envisioning Palmetto as a pedestrian-oriented main street. And then an implementing policy, um, would include language related to what the maximum height would be, build-to-lines, um, other types of standards such as that. So for discussion tonight, um, and we can walk through each of the um, different alternatives that we'd like to, like you to consider again, um, but related to density along Palmetto, height in various areas, and the prioritized east-west connection. Um, additionally, if you have any other modifications or additions to the draft guiding policy framework, it would be appreciated. So with that, um, we also have some next steps for an open house to explain these in, in more depth, to explain, um, the guiding policies framework, including more visual elements with the community in mid-August, and then, um, but hopefully have a confirmation hearing with city council in the fall. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to flip back to any of the slides as we, um, discuss preferred approaches.
Great, well, thank you, Ms. Vazano. Um, I think what I'd want to do is, uh, see if there were any, um, kind of really, uh, well, any questions or clarifying points from the commission before we take public comment. Go ahead and take public comment and then just bring it back to the commission for, uh, sort of in-depth questions and, uh, and, uh, and, and discussion. So if there are any questions that need to be asked now before we take public comment, we can go ahead and, um, do that. Otherwise, I'll take public comment and just bring it back to the, uh, to the commission.
Thank you, Chair. And I also want to mention, we do have other key staff on our Plan Pacifica team. We have Planning Director Waremeister. We have, uh, Management Analyst Joshua Montemeyer. We have Associate Planner Bonnie O'Connor, Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez, as well as Rajiv Batia from Diet and Batia, the city's consultant.
Thanks so much. Sounds like we've got a lot of people here who can really help us work through this process. So, um, let me see what the, any of the commissioners have any question or comment at this point? Actually, uh, let me see here. Uh, Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so, uh, first of all, just a matter of process. So we're gonna, right now you're asking for just clarification and we're getting to the, the bulk of the questioning and then finally deliberation after public comment. Is that what you're saying?
That was my intention. Thank you. That's more clearly stated.
Okay, I'll save my, uh, questions for after then.
Thank you. Okay, well, why don't we see then if there's any public comment? We'll go ahead and move to, to public comments at this point. Uh, Mr. Murdock, do we have any, uh, public comments on the side?
We do. We have one hand raised currently. Uh, Tom Thompson.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, my name is Tom Thompson, and I've been a Sharp Park property owner and taxpayer uh, for, uh, over thirty-three years. Uh, so honorable commissioners, the, the vision enthusiasm in the Sharp Park Specific Plan, or the S P S P, uh, are spot on. I, I commend you for the work that you've done. Uh, but investment in the key is the key to converting the plan into results. And to attract investors for projects like the twenty-two-twelve Beach Boulevard, we need to address what I will call the infrastructure elef, element, elephant in the room. Infrastructure elephant in the room, the seawall. The S P S P mentions the seawall only in the existing conditions report section under coastal hazards. The report states the problem, but it only indicates the city is in the process of evaluating options. In effect, the report is telling investors, you better wait and see if Pacifica ever fixes this problem before investing millions or tens of millions of dollars in a project like twenty-two-twelve Beach Boulevard. An RFP will attract interest, but unfortunately, we will not attract actual investment in Sharp Park unless we show in the S P S P that Pacifica is committed to solving the seawall problem. Uh, I have experience in developments, some related to twenty-two-twelve Beach Boulevard. I can share with you if you like. To turn this problem into a solution that will attract investors, Pacifica needs to be clear in the S P S P that the seawall improvements are a top priority and Pacifica is committed as po, a policy to making seawall improvements north of the fishing pier happen ASAP. The S P S P needs to include the strongest commitment we can make to a policy of fixing the seawall problems to attract financial investment in Sharp Park. This is, one, obviously in the best interest of present owners of, and residents of Sharp Park. Two, uh, in the interest of future owners and investors, and, and most importantly, in the interest of all Pacificans. Uh, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Uh, Mr. Murdock, do we have, uh, any other comments or quest, or comments from the public?
Yes, Chair, we have, uh, several other speakers. Cindy Abbott. Ms. Abbott, please go ahead.
Hello. Thank you for bringing this project forward even under these less than ideal circumstances of being on Zoom. As an initial note, I'd like to make a, um, remark that if you're talking about North and South, South Palmetto, what the cross streets are should be clearly defined in the reports and maps provided. I couldn't find that. The two primary concerns I'd like to raise today are with parking and height or density. The third paragraph of the vision for Sharp Park states it should be easy and pleasant to get around by foot, bicycle, and to park a car once in the area. And yet, the section on transportation and connectivity has four bullet points about how to have reduced or flexible parking requirements for new developers. has four bullet points about how to have reduced or flexible parking requirements for new development. I appreciate Allison stating that more was to come on that because a robust parking strategy for West Sharp Park must be part of this plan, and it needs to be complete and well thought out. Right now, it's not there at all. Regarding height and density, on page six of the staff report, it talks about the challenges of staff to explain the difference between a mixed-use neighborhood and a mixed-use center. In particular, the greater building heights that some development would need to achieve in order to produce what staff might be looking for. But there were concerns about that with losing the character of Sharp Park. So a survey was conducted where forty-three percent of the respondents, there was no majority, but the highest number of respondents noted that you should keep Palmetto as a mixed-use neighborhood, which reflects a thirty-five feet or three stories. There was a comment that was listed at the bottom of one of the charts that said business mix is more important than allowing higher buildings. And I really concur with that. I can think of many vibrant, walkable main streets that do not have towering three and four five-story structures but are approachable and that fit in the character of the West Sharp Park neighborhood. So I hope that the Planning Commission will keep that in mind of what West Sharp Park is about, which was a small enclave of beachside cottages, such as the little building that you were just talking about earlier in tonight's meeting. It is not about four and five-story buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Mr. Murdoch, next comment, please.
Next, we have A D H. A D H, you're able to talk. Please state your name.
Hello. My name is Anna Diaz Hernandez. Recently moved to Pacifica. And the first thing I noticed in while walking on Palmetto, I live very close to the library, is that there is a lot of conflict amongst drivers at all the main intersections along Palmetto, given that some of them have apparently four-way stops, some of them do not. People seem to stop when they don't need to and don't stop when they do need to. I've seen people get out of cars and have confrontations. I'm curious how much has been thought of in regards to the design there. It seems like in part the issue might be how the painting was done at those intersections, and it creates the semblance of stops, I believe. I walk mostly to get around, and so I care a lot about pedestrian and bike safety there. So I'm curious what has been, yeah, what planning has been done in regards to that issue. I've seen several people get into serious confrontations or honk or yell and just in the short time I've been here. So that's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Murdoch, next comment, please.
Next, we have S. Thompson Drake.
Hi, this is Suzanne Drake, and I wanted to echo Tom Thompson's concerns with regard to attracting developers and investment funds into Pacifica when we're not coming forthright with hard, strong language that Pacifica as a city will drive to maintain the seawall as well as the overall infrastructure. I think that the challenge with that we didn't necessarily have before this COVID thing. There's a ton of businesses that actually have wanted to build, and yet Pacifica has seemingly come out being last or even on a no list where properties all across the Bay Area have been gobbled up. But, you know, we can't seem to get a developer to save our rear ends here. So I think that unfortunately, Pacifica has had a fairly significant reputation as not being very business-friendly or developer-friendly, and that has spilled over. Look all around the Bay Area. Half Moon Bay has been built up and is very travel visitor-serving. Certainly Daly City, certainly South City. So we're surrounded by all these communities that have have really financially benefited from the economic boom, again, other than recent day. Yet, we can't seem to get anybody of interest here. So we need to come out as being business-friendly, developer-friendly, and foremost, the seawall needs to be top of that list. So I would encourage the language to be forthright. Otherwise, we're going to have, we're going to have problems getting funding, kids. So let's keep our eye on the ball and try and really put the best foot out there to say that we're that we're welcoming to developer and investment dollars and that we are going to protect our infrastructure as well as our seawall. This might be premature, just kind of a side note. I don't know if it's, like I said, premature to bring this up yet. Has there ever been any consideration with regard to residential parking permits? That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. Mr. Murdoch, next comment, please.
Thank you, Chair. We have Kurt Keist.
Hi, this is Kurt Keist. I live in the neighborhood for thirty-five years. And my question, which is a general one, is not what is our vision, but what does, and not what our survey says about our current residents, but what is the vision of developers? This is addressing the questions of the last several commenters. It seems to me that we need really structural and granular information from real developers about not what I guess or you guess is why they don't come here, but what they actually say. One of the particular concerns I have is that the fight over height, which may get people very involved, may be irrelevant if the developers are saying, no, it's all about the permit process, or it's all about the seawall. I have no intention to build a four- or five-story building. That would be, you know, economically prohibitive, let's say. We need to know that information because that will guide the actual success. What do investors, what do developers need to put their money in Pacifica? We can, looking at those options, we can then choose amongst the ones that make the most sense for us. But let's not guess what the developers like. I believe that we already have the result, which is that we've had the mixed-use designation and thirty-five-foot height limits since nineteen eighty. And on this whole area, on Palmetto, on Francisco, we have almost no buildings that are over one to two stories. There's a couple of three-story buildings. And we have tons of empty lots. We have tons of unused potential. What's limiting that? And I don't believe it's a developer saying, well, if you gave me a chance to build a five-story building, I'd pull out a permit to build it tomorrow. I'm almost sure that it's going to be a different answer. So I would be interested if staff or our consultants can give us concrete information about what developers actually want. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Keist. Next comment, please.
I have no further hands raised right now, Chair.
Okay. I think then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission. I'll close public hearing and we'll come back to the commission and maybe I'll ask my fellow commissioners how they want to go about sort of addressing the issues that are on the table. I know that we've been asked to deal with some topics. And there are packet page seventy and seventy-one. You've kind of got the, so the topics laid out in Table One from the from those two pages, but whether or not there's a particular process that we want to use or whether staff has a recommendation on what would be the most helpful way for we as a commission to attack these issues, whether we do them one at a time or whether we, some variation on that.
Yeah, Chair, I think it's important for the commission to figure out how it wants to work through these issues. I appreciate you highlighting the information on packet page seventy and seventy-one. I also want to draw the commission's attention to the guiding policy framework, starting on packet page seventy-seven, attachment B. It gives a little bit broader overview, and I think it will give the commission a sense of the guiding principles and the values that we're trying to express as we've heard them from the community through our various engagement opportunities in person, online, stakeholder meetings, et cetera. And so this is really the starting point. We need to make sure we have a really solid foundation with these principles and we get the values right so that we can then begin the work on actual policy language to put those into policies that we can actually implement in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, the guiding principles are on page B two and entirety of that document, I guess we'd want to bear in mind as we work through this. So Commissioner Bigstick, I see your hand up. So what do you say?
Thank you, Chair. So I came into the meeting with about four higher-level questions, overview questions. And that's before getting to the three questions that are specifically before us. And then while I was listening to public feedback, I came up with at least another six questions based on public feedback. So I personally would recommend starting with the general overview questions and then I would move into public, well, I'd prob, I'm thinking start with general stuff slash public feedback and then get into those three specifics and go from there if we want to talk policy framework and all.
Okay, sounds good. Well, why don't you be the first to do so?
Thank you, sir. So so just again, kind of higher-level questions. First of all, we've done a lot of work about updating the L C L U P. And I was wondering if as we're talking Sharp Park Specific Plan, are we going to have to go back to the L C P? Or is something going to be incorporated after we have this discussion? Or where is that process even? I'm just kind of wondering about relation of this to the L C P process.
Sure. So a specific plan is a more particular focused document, generally over a smaller geographic area and generally with more specificity as its name suggests. And so a specific plan has to be consistent with the higher-level general plan and local coastal land use plan. And so it's our hope that we're able to timely certify the new local coastal land use plan that the commission has acted on and that the City Council's approved. That document is with the Coastal Commission right now, and we're working through that process to respond to some of their informational requests on the document so that the Coastal Commission can complete its analysis and then consider whether or not to certify the document. So it's our intention to hopefully have the L C L U P certified and then to follow along with a certification process for the specific plan.
Very much. There was a brief bit in the staff report about priority development areas. And it's my recollection that prior to our larger process here, there was some talk about Eureka Square initially being a PDA. It doesn't sound like that's the case at this point. It sounds like Palmetto itself and along thirty-five will be. So I was wondering if you might just check in, tell us a little bit more about PDAs. And then more specifically, kind of what we're thinking the plan is for the PDAs we have edged out.
Yeah, Director Waremeister, I think would like to offer some observations on that.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify that the PDA for the Sharp Park area encompasses the entire Sharp Park Specific Plan area. So Eureka Square is part of that PDA. So so, yeah, that's my response.
And getting back to Eureka Square, I've seen a whole heck of a lot of construction going on over there. But I have no idea what they're doing in terms of whether or not there's any kind of residential construction that's a part of their project or if that's an element that might be included later. You could just tell us what's going on with Eureka Square right now.
Yeah, Eureka Square is doing a major facade improvement. And so there is no substantial change to uses there, except that I think they're making sure that there's space for some making sure outdoor dining could be accommodated in some space they already have available for that.
It seems to me, my perception is the city has done a lot of conversation in terms of we could put housing on top of the Eureka Square use. Has the city actually talked to the owners of Eureka Square about that idea at all? Or is that a conversation we have down the road if it's possible?
Yes, they are aware of that aspiration that the city has at least for their property. And so they indicated that they're not ready to do that now. They don't know if, when, and if they will be ready to do that, but they are aware of these designations.
They seem like purely neutral on the point, or do they seem to have a predilection one way or the other?
I would say that they have been focused on the present, right? And the present, they're not interested at this point. I would say that they've been silent, at least in conversations I've had. I don't know if Christian or Bonnie have had other conversations. They really have been silent on the future of that site.
Ultimately, it leads into my next question about regional housing need allocation numbers. And it just strikes me as very awkward to talk about a property as though it might be a part of the solution when we have no idea if they're going to sign on. And it sounds like they might. But it's good to know at least where we stand so that as we're having that discussion going forward, it tempers at least. So my final like overview question is about those RENA numbers. And my understanding is that in the future, when we soon get the new numbers, unlike previous times, we've gotten the numbers, there might be consequences if we can't meet the fullness of them. If you could tell me if I'm anywhere near accurate in my assessment of that and if you have any insight into what those numbers might be, or talk a little bit about RENA in general, that might be helpful for this.
Yeah, I can maybe start out with, and Christian and Bonnie can please jump in, I can start out with maybe addressing your first comment, which is your instinct to kind of question counting a site that's already developed as kind of a solution site for the number of units that, the RENA number that we need to get has been identified as an issue by our state legislature. And so there is much more stringent criteria regarding which sites you can count and how much you'll be able to count for density on those sites in the next housing element round. So we're just at the very beginning of that process, so I can't say how it's going to shake out in our community, except I can say that that instinct is correct and has been reflected in legislation recently. As far as the RENA process, you're accurate in that the RENA Methodology Committee is sort of in the middle of working out its recommendation to their A BAG Board and M T C. And so I don't have an indication of what our final number will be at this point. Soon, a draft methodology will be put out for public comment. They won't assign a number to it, but you'll be able to do the math and kind of get an idea of where our Pacifica or whichever jurisdiction's allocation might be. I feel like there was another question and
There's been some talk that when those numbers come out, there might be consequences if we don't fulfill the entirety of the number. I think another question that just popped into my mind, which could be briefly touched upon. So we don't actually know if the number might go down depending on the methodology. might go down depending on the methodology. Because prior to now, I think it's been suggested, especially when I listen in on council, the number might very well go up, given the amount of need we have. But since we don't quite yet even know how they're going to be counting that number, we don't really know that yet. The number could go down?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct. So the, the region, the, what they call the big number for the entire nine county or barrier region is bigger. We've got that number. But you're absolutely right in how that is now allocated is still being debated. And so, our number could go up, or it could go down, depending on how that shakes out. And to the question about consequences, I'm going to assume that you meant consequences for not actually building the units. So, so state law is still not there, but what, where it has evolved is there's consequences for cities who don't approve housing projects at the density that they're allowed in the zones that they designated. So basically, a city can no longer designate sites, get their housing element through, and then on the backend deny projects, or, or approve projects at lesser densities. It's very difficult to do that now, with the way that laws have been changed.
They're holding us to the standards we set for ourselves, is what it sounds like.
Right.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. So as we go forward with this process tonight, it sounds like it would probably be most beneficial to kind of stick with the numbers we currently have from the last time they gave us numbers. And because I, I feel like it, it might be helpful to have that number in mind, just as a baseline of, we do actually have tangible goals that as a, a community, as a city, we're trying to achieve in terms of not just creating a community in which we can house people in general, but also there are large organizations looking at us to make sure that we're fulfilling that obligation. And, okay, so I, I think then, oh, yeah, what, what is the current number that we have unfulfilled? Because I know we've, what, what, how many more do we have to reach that goal as of now?
Christian, do you remember?
I don't know offhand, but it's probably at least a couple hundred units. Our regional housing needs allocation for 2015 to 2023 is 413 housing units across a variety of income levels, and we're far short of achieving that in terms of permitted and constructed units.
I heard you say at least a couple hundred. Is it potentially higher than that, or are you fairly confident around the 200 number?
I would ask if Josh Montemeyer has a better sense of that. He prepared our annual progress report for housing on this issue. Josh?
Sure. That number is 334.
Thank you very much. So again, it's, it's helpful to kind of at least bear that in the back of my mind as we're talking about density going forward. So those are my higher overview questions. It occurred to me as I was listening to public comment that other commissioners might also have questions regarding the public. So I, I've taken up plenty of time. I'll yield the floor for the moment, and if I don't hear my questions asked, I'll ask them on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Berman?
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick asked a few of my questions already, specifically the, what our RENA number designation is currently, so thank you for that. One kind of one-off question that I just wanted to get out of the way. I had a question about one of the bullet points in the guiding policy framework land use section. It is packet page seventy-nine. Explore options for improving vacant sites with interim improvements such as landscaping or temporary uses, such as pop-up events and activities. I'm wondering, does the planning department intend those vacant sites to be city sites, or how would, if they're private sites, how would that be coordinated with the property owner?
A couple elements to that response. We have not thus far envisioned any changes on property ownership from private to public. Part of our work on the citizenland. So the bullet point is in the context of properties remaining public or private in their current estate of ownership. And so, they could cite you to be public or private in this context. With that said, we do currently have a special and temporary and permanent process, but many of our spectacles are rather cumbersome. So I think what I would envision as a part of this particular bullet point is finding a process to allow expanding major temporary uses to have a more streamlined process for commencing and undertaking the events, so that we don't have more dynamism and fewer barriers to entry to bring those interesting private activities to a finer area.
So, Mr. Murdock, I don't know if it's just my, my computer not, but you're a little distorted.
Yeah, that was mine too, sorry.
So, I think I picked up about fifty or sixty percent of what you were saying, but there is a little distortion going on there.
I'll try to succinctly recap. So what I was indicating was that we do not envision any...
It's still, sorry.
Yeah, it sounds really kind of like auto-tuned almost. It's sort of, sort of a weird distortion that we're getting. I don't know if it's feedback, or just a connectivity issue, but yeah, it's, it's, it's probably not good enough quality for, for, for most folks to pick up what you're, what you're saying.
I don't know. If someone else may be able to, to answer, or kind of pick up the sense of what Christian was trying to get at?
If I could, and maybe Christian or Ms. O'Connor could nod their heads, or jump in, Ms. O'Connor, if you think that, I need correction, but I think what Mr. Murdock was trying to say was that the, that comment was with regard to reservation of potential use, land uses that could occur in the future, should a private property owner wish to develop their property in that manner?
Yeah, is the audio better at this point?
Okay, thank you, Assistant Attorney Fonsano. Yeah, I just, I was hoping for clarification on that. And I agree with that policy. That sounds like a great opportunity, flexibility for property owners. Maybe I'll touch on a couple of the comments that we heard, and then someone else can chime in after me. But there was mention of asking for verbiage on the, the city's planned protection of the seawall. I know we don't have the full SPSP developed yet. That's, we're kind of in the first steps of it. But my understanding from our LCLUP process is that the, the seawall improvements are very heavily languaged in there. So then, maybe staff can consider incorporating heavy reference to the LCLUP for development on the seawall, protection of the seawall. Is that something that's possible, or does staff recommend incorporating more seawall, or incorporating a seawall subsection in the SPSP once developed?
I'll do more soundcheck over here, yeah. Okay.
Be possible to like, sign off and sign on, and see if that helps at all?
Yeah, I think Christian's going to try to sign off and, and hopefully sign back on. To answer your question, Commissioner Berman, the Sharp Park specific plan is, is, will make mention of the, of the desire to create protections and, and promote resiliency of the Sharp Park area. Obviously, that's necessary to support the investment that we're looking to add to that neighborhood. The timing of this effort is actually in line with a timing of an effort with the engineering department, and their feasibility and planning effort of the Beach Boulevard, Beach Boulevard seawall. So this, the discussion of the Sharp Park specific plan is already being, is already being talked about in conjunction with the, the proposed and necessary armoring efforts that need to be done. So does that answer your questions?
Somewhat. I, I just want to make sure, especially if the community, I mean, everyone here in our little virtual room probably understands that there's the LCLUP, and then there's the Sharp Park specific plan, which kind of homes in on the area, and then there's also the general plan. I'm sure each of which is going to have reference and language to armoring of the seawall, or sea level rise mitigations. But my understanding during our LCLUP process is the heavy bulk of that policy and language will be in the LCLUP. And I don't know if staff does not want to be duplicative between the SPSP and the LCLUP. So maybe just incorporating references to those, or, or would staff want to include like, a whole hazard or armoring section in the SPSP?
I, I don't imagine it would have its own hazard section. It would rely on the LCLUP guidance and, and policies. There will be, like I said, there will be reference to connect the two, but it, it won't have a, its own separate analysis.
And just to emphasize, that the specific plan has to be consistent with the general plan and local coastal land use plan.
Great. Yeah, hopefully, I know there were a few comments regarding that. Hopefully, that helps address community members' concerns. Another item, and then I'll kind of let my other commissioners take over. There was a request for definition between the north and the south of Palmetto, like where does that begin and end? Thought that was a great question, because I kind of found myself asking that as well. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so... Would the commission confirm? Is my audio working again?
Yeah, we can hear you. Much better, much better.
Allison, would you like to...
Oh, yes. So I think in the survey, we had envisioned the cutoff point being San Jose Avenue, to account for that pedestrian bridge entryway, and then most of the development happening at the council chamber site, the library. Yeah, and thought that, that those, that little area north of it would help to connect the rest of the area.
Got it. So San Jose Avenue is kind of the, the separating point. Thank you.
And Chair, if I could have a moment, please, with your okay, to just touch on the question earlier about temporary uses, where we discovered I had an audio problem. So I would say the intent of that point is to increase vibrancy with the ability to have a broader range of temporary uses. We currently have a temporary use process, but it's rather cumbersome. And so I think we're looking to expand upon that, so that we can have more, more interesting and different types of temporary events in the area. And to the question about property ownership, the specific plan at this point is not contemplating any change in ownership from public to private, or vice versa. So that's, that policy in that bullet, if it, you know, is supported by the commission in advances, really enables the property owners to undertake those temporary uses prior to a full development of the site. Again, it's an interim activity to try to increase interest, foot traffic, visitors, et cetera, and to really demonstrate the viability of the area.
And then any funds required for that would be purely voluntary by the property owner, right?
Well, that's certainly one possibility. I mean, we are far from having developed the full plan yet. I mean, there could be city support through economic development channels, for example, to sponsor or to support some of the events. Perhaps the Chamber of Commerce or other non-city organizations could support third-party temporary events. I think a variety of ways that could manifest. But I think having an improved policy framework in a, a set of policies that allow that to happen more easily, and with less cost and fewer barriers to entry, is what we're trying to get at with that bullet point.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Berman, at this point?
Um, I was mainly just going to try to touch on some of the public's comments, but I think I've spoken a lot today. I'll let other commissioners go first, and I could play cleanup at the end if needed.
That sounds good. We'll loop back with you then. How about Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I'm relatively new on the commission, and this is my first one of these specific plans. I have some, a couple real basic items that I need to get answered. Are we mainly interested in ensuring we can build a, a lot more residential units? Are we mainly interested in building infrastructure? Are we mainly interested in facilitating private investment to support tourist activities or resident services? I'm, I'm a bit lost after all this discussion of what's the goal of what we're trying to accomplish, and what kind of timeframe do we have, and what sort of financial and other resources we can bring to bear, or even that maybe the city could bring to bear on any of these problems?
Yeah, well, thanks for, you know, again, sometimes it's helpful to have a, a good framing question like that. Maybe we'll ask staff to help us, again, sort of frame the context.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Godwin. It's a great point. I think we failed to clarify earlier in the staff presentation that many of the commissioners have not yet been a part of this process. Some, I think, out of personal interest have been following along, but for your sake, and for the sake of some members of the community that are less familiar, I want to touch on a few points. So the city council generally has provided some guidance that they imagine a re-envisioned, more dynamic Palmetto Avenue area. And so what that has meant is, a key tool to achieve that council vision is implementation of a specific plan. And what that entails is significant community engagement and involvement. And the way that we've tried to structure this specific plan process is to listen to the community and gather information about what their vision is, within those guiding parameters that the city council has laid out, that we want to revitalize Palmetto Avenue. So certainly, Palmetto Avenue is not, you know, an area that exists in isolation, and really, it's part of the broader neighborhood. And that's why we've convinced the city council that a specific plan is really the appropriate vehicle to achieve revitalized and more vibrant Palmetto Avenue, but also certain other supporting improvements in the West Sharp Park neighborhood and parts of East Sharp Park, that all in totality work together to achieve that goal. And so when we laid out that framework in the beginning to try to help this community conversation begin, we tried to gather just broad-based input from the community about what's their, what are their goals and desires for the Palmetto and Sharp Park area? What do they like about the area now? What do they enjoy doing there? What are things they wish they could do there, or things they wish could be improved? And as we sifted through and tried to distill all of that wonderful community feedback we received, we boiled it down to those three goals that you see in the documents. Achieving vibrancy, supporting great places, and improving connectivity. We think nearly everything that we've heard, and that the council wants to achieve, and that we've heard the community wants to achieve, probably falls within those three buckets in some way, shape, or form. And so we're trying to use that, you know, those three broad constructs, to then begin to shape more and more specific layers of policy, so that we can get to specific, you know, measurable and attainable policies that at the end of the day, provide a clear environment for potential developers and property owners, but also the community to understand what it is that they should expect from activity, development, infrastructure improvement to support, private infrastructure improvement to support private property and public development and the like. So hopefully that, that kind of rounds out some of those points and I'm happy to speak further on any particular gaps that may still remain in your, your understanding of the process.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Rajiv Patia. Uh, Christian had mentioned that I was on the call as well. In response to Commissioner, you know, Godwin's comment, a specific plan is a very powerful tool under state law to help with actual implementation of the designs and the overall objectives and the standards that we will come up with. Specifically, over the past few years, the state has provided additional incentives. So if you, if there is a housing development, a mixed-use development for a specific plan, permission and environmental review has been completed, which is our intention for the Sharp Park specific plan, to have the general plan EIR also be the EIR on the specific plan, then those projects are exempt from further environmental review. Just to give you an example, and we would have hashed out issues about design standards, development standards, about views, about step backs and so on. So the overall permitting process for a development should move much, much faster. And this also ties in with the housing, you know, issue that at the end of the day, you know, when the city ratcheted down the numbers, you know, when push comes to shove, when there's a housing development out there, well, under state law, there's, I mean, the city can certainly make a test to the, to HCD, the state Department of Housing and Community Development. We have a specific plan approved. So actually, the city would not be in a position to lower any height limits or density limitations once the specific plan has been approved. And that's the reason why we are taking the time to listen to the community, to engage with you, to make sure we get it right. Once we do get it right, then development can, you know, um, will be streamlined and can, can proceed. You know, pretty forthwith is, is, is what I would say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rajiv. And I, I failed to address one point, Commissioner Godwin, and that's your question about financing. And so to this point, preparation of the plan has been through an expenditure from authorized by the city council. But a specific plan is also a powerful tool that can enable this, that can enable the city to implement various financing mechanisms. And so that could commonly come in the form of impact fees, for example, that are associated with different types of development the city is trying to achieve. Um, and so understanding what the land use framework and other policies are then enables that financing mechanism that can help to improve infrastructure, public realm improvements like streetscapes, bicycle lanes, et cetera. It's really a strong tool to tie together all of those different pieces of what a desirable neighborhood or planning area should be like. And we're trying to understand what the area should be like based on a broad-based community feedback that we've been seeking so far.
I'll just add too that there will be a section within the specific plan that outlines the financing and implementation strategy.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Godwin, I, what other questions do you have?
Oh, that was, that was the main one. I wanted to make sure I saw this thing from the proper viewpoint and covered the breadth and didn't add things that weren't really there and, and those things that were vital to it. So that's enough for me to get started.
Thank you. And I appreciate again having the, the, the framing of it. It's, it's always super useful. Uh, Commissioner Hauser.
Um, sure. Uh, many of my questions were actually already asked and answered, so. Have three. Um, one was, uh, in relation to the connection section. Um, I'm wondering if the city has looked at if there's actual right-of-way space for the improvements that have been contemplated?
So I'll start by indicating we have not done design level analysis. This is really more high-level, um, policy and community desire level, um, planning that we're doing. Certainly there are a variety of techniques that can be used, either, you know, forming what's called a road diet, for example, to shrink vehicle travel lanes to provide non-motorized infrastructure, for example, like bike lanes or widened sidewalks. There may be unused right-of-way currently, um, that if that entire street is rebuilt, you can accommodate additional facilities. Um, I will ask Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez to maybe speak a little more about whether the bicycle and pedestrian master plan proceeded to any finer level of detail as applicable to the Sharp Park neighborhood.
Thanks, Christian. Good evening, Commission. My name is Ryan Marquez. I'm Associate Engineer with the Public Works Department. The bicycle pedestrian master plan calls for a couple of possible road diets. However, it doesn't go through the specificity required to implement them. So basically that means that we would want to look at them on a project-by-project basis because they could impact parking. They could impact travel lanes. And, and so we didn't exactly look into that at this point. With regards to the specific area that you're looking at in Sharp Park, we did not identify any areas for road diet, I believe, outside of Oceana as a possibility.
So there, there's, there really hasn't been contemplated that people might be asked to provide additional right-of-way dedication of their property?
No, that was not considered during the bicycle pedestrian master plan.
Great.
Oh, I would, I would also add that it's not just a matter of a road diet. Some of these streets that we're looking at don't have continuous sidewalks, actually, let alone, you know, additional bikeways, for example. Santa Rosa Avenue is one of the ones that we're looking at. And I do distinctly remember there is, I mean, the sidewalk itself sort of stops. And, and, and then you'd get off as a pedestrian, get back on the road and get back on again. So there are certain basic things that we would do first to begin with, without requiring additional right-of-way, which is to complete the sidewalks. And I think only then beyond that are we going to be starting looking into other mechanisms as to how to achieve additional right-of-way if we need that. I mean, much can be done within the additional right-of-way to enhance the pedestrian and walking experience as well as safety.
All right, okay. And then one of the questions was, um, on whether affordable housing needs additional height incentive, incentives. Um, and I wanted to get staff's input on what could, you know, if we're formulating a specific plan that is looking at vibrancy and aesthetics, is there a reason that we would look at doing that that would not be able to be accomplished by state density bonus law? Is there, is there a benefit to doing it on a municipal level?
It's hard to say. I think if we can establish some comparative advantage through our local regulations outside of density bonus law, the city may be able to retain greater control over other aspects of the development. As you're aware, when density bonus is triggered, the city is obligated to offer concessions and incentives to a developer. And that can often relax other aspects of the project that may be very important to the city, like parking or, um, you know, other setback requirements and height standards. And so I agree that there's probably limited space to establish such a policy, but we think it may be worth exploring. And to the extent that we can do that, we may be able to achieve a double benefit in that we provide more affordable housing, but also retain greater local control in the form of not foregoing other zoning standards. We have to give up as incentives or concessions.
All right, okay. Um, and then my, my last question was regarding the Coastal Commission input. I don't know if staff was planning on talking a little bit more about that. But there seemed to be some Coastal Commission thoughts on the height. And I was wondering if there was any more specificity that had been given. You know, I know like Half Moon Bay, the hotel is five stories there. So I'm wondering where, if there's like a new policy that they're looking at or what, what the thought was on that point.
Sure. I think, um, we understand that the Coastal Commission staff and the Coastal Commission ultimately will have an important role in final specific plan that comes out of this process. To that end, um, we did engage specifically with the Coastal Commission on the issue of height, um, back in April, I believe. There had been sort of an urban legend, if you will, of sorts, that the Coastal Commission district staff in our area were not supportive of heights greater than thirty-five feet. We wanted to, to confirm or dispel that urban legend as early in the process as possible, especially given the importance of heights above thirty-five feet that we identified within some of the potential options that the commission's going to discuss. And so in that call, the Coastal Commission staff made clear that there's no formal or informal wink, wink kind of policy about thirty-five-foot height limits. They do recognize that in some cases, heights above thirty-five feet may be permissible. But I would say I got the sense, and other staff can, can share their perspectives who are on the call, I got the sense that as height went above thirty-five feet and progressively went higher, the Coastal Commission's anxiety about potential coastal resource impacts, such as coastal views, for example, from public spaces increased. Their concerns about crowding at the street level increased. And I think the robustness and extent of coastal resource impacts analysis correspondingly would increase. And so what that means is we have the ability to pursue heights above thirty-five feet, but we, we need not do it at the detriment of other coastal resources. And so we understood that as a requirement of any aspect of the specific plan, that we're going to evaluate the full range of coastal resources. So I think we're comfortable with the feedback we received initially. It may look quite alarming in the, the comment letter, but I think it was anticipated and an expected part of the process.
Thank you. That's all for me, Chair.
Thank you. I, Commissioner Bigstick, I see your hand up, but I think I'm going to take the liberty of just asking a question or two before I turn it back over. I, I, one was, um, we, we got a comment that, you know, sort of raised the notion of making sure that we're, you know, sort of getting information from sort of real developers or, or investors, you know, about what they really kind of see as being, you know, sort of important to have in place in order for us to have, you know, levels of economic revitalization. And we, we had, um, my recollection of the process was that there actually had been an economic analysis or, or, um, something along those lines that was done in this process. And I was hoping that I could get maybe staff to talk a little bit about how that, those considerations have sort of been worked in, excuse me, today.
You, thank you, Chair. I think we've done a couple activities as part of our planning work so far that, that touch on these issues. One of them was called the Existing Conditions Report, or ECR, that did a general type of market analysis for Pacifica. Um, I don't recall it touching specifically on height, but it assessed really the general marketability and desirability, if you will, of Pacifica in the broader Bay Area market for uses like retail, office, uh, and housing, I believe. The other activity that we have undertaken was stakeholder interviews. And so we included a, a range of community participants from residents to business owners to current and potential future developers. And, um, you know, I think Allison can speak more to what the interviews, you know, what the type of feedback that was received, but we have sought input from actual developers. So Allison, do you have any further thoughts on that?
Yes. So we did speak with three local developers in the area and I just also wanted to reiterate Rajiv's point earlier that this specific plan will provide more certainty and streamlining about what developers can potentially do. But we did hear about concerns with the seawall, um, some other concerns about the permitting process. But really what they focused on is making Sharp Park a destination. And some developers were saying, there's no, there's no there, there. We need to make sure that we have the right draw to bring the foot traffic that's going to make mixed-use development viable.
And a, a couple other thoughts that come to mind for me, Chair, is that as the commenter actually mentioned, we've had these particular development standards for forty years at this point. I think, um, you know, it's my assessment as a planner that more of the same will probably deliver more of the same in terms of the development regulations. And so I think, um, you know, looking with fresh eyes on what our development standards will allow, how they relate to construction costs and other types of typical development occurring in the Bay Area in twenty twenty as compared to nineteen eighty is a helpful process to go through. And I think also, um, in the limited number of projects that we've encountered outside and inside of the specific plan area over the last few years, very often for projects that don't move forward, where we've spoken with and met with developers, quite often the problem is that our development regulations are too constraining and don't allow the number of units they need to make a project profitable and to quote-unquote pencil out. And so, um, a common issue is packing in the types of units they need to sell to meet the market demand within a thirty-five-foot height limit while also providing full off-street parking. And so you can see it's a very difficult equation to balance across all of the different variables. And so we think trying to, you know, rejigger that equation in some fashion, that's respectful of the community's values, but also perhaps takes into effect, uh, or takes into account, rather, current conditions in twenty twenty and into the future as compared to forty years looking backwards.
Thank you for that. And I just had one other question, or maybe it's in the nature of a comment, but maybe I'll, I'll try to frame it as a question. And that is with respect to the guiding policy framework in particular, you know, one of the guiding principles, uh, one of the bullets under guiding principles is the promotion of the development of housing in mixed-use settings, which accommodates residents of all incomes, family types and life stages, which, uh, I think is a good guiding principle. I'm in, in favor of it. When we get down to the guiding policy framework and in particular the land use, the land use piece of that, and there, there are some bullets under sort of the general heading, and one of which is a a reference to promoting a variety of housing types and sizes and programs to support the development of housing affordable to moderate, low and extremely low-income households, which is something that I'm especially interested in. I was curious about whether or not we had the ability at this stage or, or whether it would be consistent with kind of what we, we've heard to date. Going back up then to the guiding principles, kind of the overarching things. And, and again, as we talk about housing that accommodates, um, residents of all incomes, being able to state a specific, you know, desire to ensure that we're focused on moderate, low and very low income, affordable, affordability in particular, I guess is what I'm getting at. As a guiding principle, recognizing it's being manifested, articulated in the, uh, in the guiding policy framework, it just strikes me that, you know, affordability is so central to, one of the things I'm concerned about, that I'd like to see it articulated as a up at the highest level at a guiding principle level. And, and recognizing again that staff has done a good job of reflecting that concern, um, down in the, uh, framework, land use in particular.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, the, the feedback is well taken. And I think what we're striving to do is to create a policy framework that comes at housing affordability from a number of, of directions. And so certainly there's the below-market rate housing ordinance that the city currently has. Projects of eight or more units, not, not less than fifteen percent must be reserved, deed restricted for persons with low and moderate and, uh, very low income. That, achieving projects of that type in Sharp Park right now is extremely difficult. For starters, the sites tend to be quite small. And at current densities, you won't come anywhere close to a project with eight units. And so the commission has an option, thinking through the land use framework, of really ratcheting up densities under certain circumstances so that eight units can be built and formal below-market rate housing might actually occur. Another angle to go about it is to consider the types of housing units that are being built and striving to construct more quote-unquote naturally affordable housing. So what we see right now most commonly is really much closer to the luxury end of, of housing. So we're very often seeing three and four-bedroom townhomes and condos. And you can understand the type of income that's required to achieve and purchase a housing unit of that type. If we achieve certain densities and including perhaps even minimum densities in these policies, we may be able to achieve housing units that are on the smaller end of the spectrum. Studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, that accommodate people with lower incomes without achieving necessarily full-fledged deed-restricted housing. And so we think there's some opportunity potentially through those policies. And then we think potentially a third way is to innovate in that space that we discussed with Commissioner Hauser a little bit earlier, which is to see if there is a way to create incentives to providing affordable housing of the deed-restricted variety, but for projects below, you know, eight units, for example, but perhaps outside of the context of the current EMR or density bonus realm. And so we need to explore that much more critically. We haven't put a, a huge amount of effort in that yet. We want to check the variety of policies that the commission may or may not support. But that's really what we're getting at with those, with that policy language. And we certainly can highlight housing affordability, um, even at the highest levels of the policies.
Uh, yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm really appreciative of all those ideas and all those, all those efforts. And, and again, if we could, I, I, myself would be in favor of, uh, tweaking the language slightly just again to highlight how, you know, we're obviously interested in residents of all incomes. That's necessary for a vibrant community, but with a particular you know, focus on, um, on affordability and, and these various measures that we're talking about to, uh, enhance affordability at the, at the lower income levels. Commissioner Bigstick?
Chair, um, so I just wanted to ask this one question a slightly different way before I put a fork in it because, um, Mr. Thompson and Ms. Drake's Mr. Thompson and Ms. Drake's statements about the seawall were well taken by me. And as I was looking through the policy framework on packet page eighty-five, B five, under Coastal Resources and Conservation, there's that one bullet point toward the end about maximizing the benefits of public access to the coast and enjoyment of recreational assets while ensuring the coastal resources are protected and enhanced. I was wondering if just ensuring that coastal resources are protected and enhanced by a seawall as well as other methods might not be a bad idea to put in there, and I'm asking.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Can you please point me to where that language is?
Certainly, packet page eighty-one. It's under Coastal Resources and Conservation. And it's the second black dot. It's the last black dot on the page.
Sure, I think we can explore whether it's under Coastal Resources and Conservation or elsewhere to reinforce the policy emphasis on replacement of the Beach Boulevard seawall without being redundant with a broader range of supporting policies that are in the local coastal land use plan that we're working through the certification process right now.
Making sure that the specific notion of a seawall is easily accessible to a developer seems like not a bad idea to me. Okay, so that aside, it was very helpful to have an understanding that San Jose is a delineator between north and south. And happily, I wasn't too far off the mark as I was driving around and thinking San Jose was a a good middle ground. So the rest of my questions are kind of about parking and traffic in general. Ms. Abbott asked about parking strategy in general, I think, possibly talking about a parking structure or whatever other strategies might be available to us. And Ms. Drake also referenced the idea of a parking permit program, which seemed interesting to me. So between the two questions, I seem to kind of dovetail into a general parking question. So specifically, is a permit on the table? And non-specifically, what kind of parking strategies are we talking about so far?
So I'll respond to that by relaying that the city is undertaking a comprehensive parking and parking strategy assessment as part of the specific plan process. Gatin Batia does have an expert traffic consulting firm that it is working with for that purpose. They've been doing work along the way. We will ultimately release the findings and recommendations of that analysis. But in large part, they're influenced by the land use decisions that the specific plan will implement and allow. And so the parking strategies needed for a very high intensity specific plan would potentially be different from a lower intensity specific plan. And so I would suggest all options are on the table right now. And we want to find out how to optimize those parking and transportation strategies based on the land use that will be generating that traffic and parking demand. And so I think the one thing that we can state with certainty right now is that the City Council has enacted an interlude parking fee for the Sharp Park specific plan area, which is a really helpful and important tool related to parking strategies in particular. And they'll enable the collection of fees in lieu of providing physical parking spaces so that centralized, common parking facilities can be provided once sufficient funding is available or other financing mechanisms are able to be utilized to speed up that production of off-street parking. So we do have the beginning of a toolbox. And I think we will have more tools in that toolbox as we get to later stages of the specific plan process.
And I just want to also add that our parking consultant, DKS Associates, actually did a parking survey of Sharp Park, fortunately before COVID hit, right around the peak times. So we have very, very good data on parking utilization during different time periods on different streets. And that's just going to be part of the overall, you know, and they made some initial recommendations, but obviously we are not quite there yet with the land uses. So we need to look through the complete picture and then come back to you with actual parking recommendations.
I want to add too that parking will also be considered as part of a larger strategy where we consider other transportation alternative improvements such as bus access, bicycle access, pedestrian improvements, and the like. So it's not just about parking, but you know, how it all works in a mobility system as well.
Yeah, and to round out that point, we are also trying to think critically about the future of single occupant personal automobiles. We are in an interesting time of technological innovation with ride sharing, with self-driving vehicles. And the policies and decisions and hopefully the developments that follow in reliance on this Sharp Park specific plan in the future are going to affect the built environment for fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years in some cases. And so we want to be really mindful of efficient use of land for desired activities. And you know, perhaps those desired activities are parking and storage of automobiles, or perhaps there's something else. And so we are trying to think of how that future of automobiles fits in with land use in this area as well.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. And I think helpful for the neighborhood to have a full appreciation for what the process looks like on that point. My only other question is a much more specific one, and I I'm internally chuckling because I had a similar circumstance with a different development in which a similar issue was brought up, and I just had that experience earlier that the speaker brought up. So in this instance, it was Ms. Hernandez speaking on stop signs in the area. And as she was speaking, I was recollecting how as I was driving around the area earlier today, at one point in time, I came to an intersection, again, as I was traveling down San Jose. And I think the stop sign was, it must have been a foot or two behind my view at that point. And I really wasn't sure in that moment if I was actually at a stop or if there was no stop there. And it was a disconcerting moment, because if there's traffic behind me, there's an impetus to go, go, go. But if there is a stop sign right there, then stopping is absolutely the more prudent option. So my question is, are we, as a part of this process, assessing signage? And in this case, specifically stop signage to see if the current strategy is the ideal one?
I would say that we are striving to look at all of the dimensions that affect the built environment in the Sharp Park planning area. Land use and non-motorized travel have been priorities thus far. We have, as I mentioned, had this companion analysis as well about parking and vehicular transportation as well. I think the feedback we've received tonight is feedback that has not come through clearly previously about perhaps the confusing nature of the intersection controls in Palmetto Avenue. So that's something we will relay to our Public Works staff beyond Mr. Marquez, who's here tonight, and also to DKS, the consultant that we're working with for the transportation analysis. That is really relevant for making it an inviting place in a walkable neighborhood. If people are afraid of vehicle pedestrian conflict, i.e. getting hit by a car, that's not a welcoming, inviting place to spend time and to move about the neighborhood.
Previous experience involved one-way signs also, so it's part and parcel, I suppose, at this point. So that's all my questions based on public input. So personally, I'm prepared to start discussing the actual question points, but it looks like others have other questions.
Well, yeah, let me go to Commissioner Berman and see if she has other questions at this point.
Yeah, actually, Commissioner Big Stick asked my final cleanup questions. Thank you for that. And I am also ready to move on to the land use, building height, and connectivity items specifically. But before doing so, I thought this was a nice segue into that section. I appreciate everything that staff has done. And I understand that this is kind of the first step to developing the specific plan for Sharp Park. And I know, and hopefully, while we deliberate the next three items, that our direction today will then result in more detailed analysis. So I know there's been a lot of questions from my fellow commissioners about detailed cross-sections and TIA's. And I just appreciate that we are going through this process. And then based on the land use designation that we determine, a traffic impact analysis will be completed. And based on where we choose to look closer at bike and pedestrian improvements, feasibility will be further looked at. So I just kind of wanted to insert that, knowing that we're looking at things at a high level, and we'll certainly have another chance to look at more detailed feasibility.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Hauser, any additional questions before we move on to the substance of the conversation?
No, I was ready for substance as well.
Okay, well, I think what I'm going to do then is circle back to Commissioner Big Stick. He kind of had his hand up first, so to speak, for that. So we'll start with Commissioner Big Stick, then we'll move to Commissioner Berman, and then to Commissioner Hauser, and then Commissioner Godlin and myself.
Very much, Chair. So I guess, are we taking it one by one? Is that how we're doing it?
No, I think if you just wanted to provide your perspective with respect to the subject matters all at once, maybe that's the most efficient way of doing it, rather than around robin.
Okay, I mean, especially the third point, I'm not sure if I'm prepared yet to fully dive in because I feel like I need a little bit more perspective. But the first two definitely touch on density and height. And which, to my mind, go hand in hand. When I was looking through the third option under the topic of land use was the one most appealing to me because I'm very interested in affordable units as much as possible, both as a, for community reasons as well as reasons for meeting our regional numbers. I like the idea that's presented here that when the numbers get high. I'm reading as I'm trying to do it, so I'm trying to get it right. So let me just read it aloud so that maybe that jogs my brain back into place. So number three says, apply MUC designation, mixed-use center designation to all Palmetto Avenue, but only allow projects in northern Palmetto which maximize affordable housing production by exceeding current inclusionary housing ordinance requirements to maximize potential density above the mixed-use neighborhood levels. So first of all, that triggers the conversation to come in the next point as to height requirements. Because to my mind, like forty-five feet is definitely a more pleasant balance across the board. And I have great trepidations about allowing more than that, especially on the north side. And even then, I appreciate fully that I'm sure there would be a robust argument to what I just stated, that forty-five might even be allowable. But on the other hand, I like the idea of allowing for housing. So I think a question that I have that ties it together is if we were to allow, say, above forty-five feet, could that be a proposition that would have to come back before a commission? Or would that be purely a ministerial call if we were to implement that policy?
Well, I think the commission would have options in how it recommended that policy to be developed. I think, as I mentioned earlier in response to Commissioner Hauser's question, we need to explore more about whether and how we could develop such a policy is number three. We think there probably is a way to make it attractive. And I think making it attractive might entail fewer barriers to having project approval, i.e. a ministerial type approval or more limited scope review rather than a full discretionary process. So that could be one of the innovations that we try to implement is to encourage that greater affordability. And the trade-off is a smoother, faster, cheaper project approval. So there's going to be a lot of discussion about these individual policies as they take shape. But getting your guidance about what you're comfortable with. You think a discretionary process is really important to get higher height, well, then that's feedback that we need to hear.
I think personally, mixed-use center across the board to me is the more appealing way to go, given my bias toward housing. That having been said, I absolutely favor that south of San Jose, forty-five absolutely to be allowable, and then having to come or sorry, definitely forty-five. I'm open to fifty-five on the south. In the north, when it gets into the forty-five and fifty ranges, I would hope that we could put a policy in place that that would have to come before a commission. Because while I'm overly keen on getting housing in, I don't know how keen I am about it being a nice order to the community and starting to get out of the character of the community. So I I feel like there should be openness toward the projects. But I also feel like, especially on the north side, we should have a little bit more control over whether or not we really want to do that at any given moment and have that robust community involvement. Whereas south, I feel like it might be a little easier to have free range to maybe even venture into the fifty-five foot range if there's consensus. Thank you. Oh, and as for the third point, again, I feel like I San Jose was absolutely what I thought that middle ground should be. And after that, I think I just need a little bit more context, which I feel like the discussion will provide before I can go much deeper into the conversation than that.
I think Commissioner Big Stick. Maybe we'll then move at this point to Commissioner Berman.
I also am on the same wavelength as Commissioner Big Stick in two matters. One, I kind of wanted to talk about the land use and the height items together first, and then you'll have to come back to me for the bike, because I do have thoughts on that, but kind of separate. I am personally in favor of south Palmetto to allow the higher building heights. Certainly forty-five feet allowable. And then, just in understanding the feel of the area already, I would be open to fifty-five as well. I am wondering, so I'm also in favor of considering MUC designation throughout Palmetto. But I'm wondering if Ms. Moore can kind of go over the, I know you have a slide on it. If we wanted MUC designation, it sounded like it was almost not worthwhile to only have building heights of thirty-five feet max. Did I interpret that correctly?
Allison, you want me to try sharing the screen? And I can bring up the slide that I think you're looking for.
Yes, sorry, I couldn't find the unmute. Yes, so it would take a height of forty-five feet in order to achieve the capacity of mixed-use center on most sites.
And then what is the density that roughly we would look at if we tried to make it as dense as possible, but maintain thirty-five feet max height?
So on that point three acre site, mixed-use neighborhood would get you about seven housing units. Whereas mixed-use center would get you fourteen on a point three acre site.
And I think it's important to understand the scale of development in this area. Just for, you know, rough, rough estimation for sake of discussion, you're really talking about owning nearly all of a block between the cross streets along Palmetto Avenue, most of the block in order to achieve a point three acre site. And so And so, you, on some of the smaller blocks, it's right around point-three to point-four acres. On some of the larger blocks, it's maybe point-five to point-six acres for all of the commercially designated area along Palmetto on a particular side of the street. So we have to understand, if we're looking to achieve particular densities or heights or scale of development, we're by and large talking about much smaller sites than this. And I think there's a slide here where they actually talk about a 5,000-square-foot lot, and what that really looks like. That's the more common type, unless we do a really good job of incentivizing lot consolidation with additional incentives or bonuses, whatever form, either greater height, greater density, reduced parking, there's any number of ways to formulate it. But we have a really interesting challenge in this area, given the small parcel pattern and the relatively small size of commercial area.
And I would also say that our numbers here are based on average unit sizes. And to the extent someone wants to do a development with smaller units, for example, their density, you know, may be higher than the ones that are in here, and the units are larger, the density might be lower. So we can come back to the density subject later on, at a later meeting, you know, with you. We're looking for overall direction on height and the look and feel of the area, because there are many different ways of going about an overall density control. We don't even have to have a density control. We can just look at a floor area ratio control, for example, that controls the overall volume and bulk and square footage of how much you can build, and leaving the flexibility of how many units there might be to an individual developer. So there are many different ways of going about it, and I think that's worthy of another conversation at a different time with you. We don't need to have, you know, a direction on that from you, you know, for right now. If you like fifty-five or forty-five, we can come back and have a discussion about what the appropriate FAR might be or a density might be at a later date.
Got it, thank you. Okay, yeah, because I agree with some of the comments that I know I've heard in the past at community meetings, as well as a couple today. Personally, I feel that north Palmetto should remain the smaller, more beach cottage feel, in which case, that leads me to feel more comfortable with restricting building heights to thirty-five feet maximum. However, I certainly want to promote more housing in this area, because I think north Palmetto is a really great area with a bunch of resources for someone that maybe doesn't have a car and wants to live in an apartment here or there. So I'm glad that we could take a look at it closer at a later date. For now, my gut is, I feel better about building heights being taller in south Palmetto area, and then keeping the thirty-five-foot maximum in north Palmetto area. And then, I'm in favor of increasing the density as appropriate with those heights.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Hauser, I think it's your turn.
Thank you. So I had a few different comments. One of them is actually spill over from the prior item, when I asked about whether joint pool undergrounding had been contemplated. And I think staff have remarked that there wasn't a policy. And I think, you know, the guiding principles touch on some really detailed items, like, you know, adding furniture, adding bicycle racks. I think things like undergrounding joint pools, maybe it's not a requirement, but I think it's something that should be, you know, a recommendation or a guideline. Similarly, in that section, you know, we talk about being sustainable, and we talk about, again, beautifying, but there's no mention of enhanced plantings. And I've also attended a lot of the community meetings, and at every one of them, someone has brought up the fact that there are no street trees in Sharp Park. And it's unlike very many, you know, successful downtowns around the Bay Area. So I think that adding something to that nature would be really effective. There were a couple of land use questions. One was pertaining in the guiding principles document to whether or not the city would support office spaces. And I think the direction was potentially where it wouldn't hinder, you know, more dynamic commercial spaces like retail and restaurants. I think even going so far as to say that office spaces should be recommended on second and third floors, where you don't need kind of that increased floor plate, might be a helpful way to do this. There was a comment on promoting a variety of housing types. And I think all of us have kind of bolstered that point and said that we care about providing housing and affordable housing. The thing that was kind of, that jumped out at me was we very specifically called out, we wanted to support development of housing affordable to moderate, low, and extremely low-income households. And I think it's important to hit all of the strata. I mean, I think it would be better to just say different income levels, both affordable and attainable, because I think we want very low, median, and then, you know, what Mr. Murdock had suggested about being able to build attainable housing, whether or not it be de-restricted. And then, the last one is this kind of height and density principle. I agree with both Commissioners Berman and Big Stick on potentially having north Palmetto be at the mixed-use neighborhood and south Palmetto be the mixed-use commercial. I'm potentially more amenable to having the mixed-use commercial everywhere, but I see the merit, and I did see the feedback that we received. So I think, you know, maybe San Jose being that borderline is appropriate. The thing that really jumped out at me here, and I think it's really important, especially in understanding the way developers think about mixed-use buildings vertically, is that the staff report calls out that thirty-five feet correlates to three stories, forty-five feet correlates to four stories, and fifty-five feet correlates to five stories. And I understand how you can make this work, but if the goal is vibrant and dynamic ground-floor commercial and retail spaces, then I think instead of restricting it to straight building heights, we need to think in terms of stories. So what I mean by that, for example, is that residential development finances mixed-use development. People are not making, developers are not making a lot of money off of the commercial. And so if it comes to where are we going to sacrifice building height to make something better, the sacrifice is going to be made in the commercial in favor of residential. So let's say we have three stories of residential above commercial, and we have a forty-five-foot height limit, okay? A typical residential story is nine feet. You have one foot for the floor plate, so already you're at thirty feet. And then you need room for your parapet or whatever kind of complete roof is appropriate with your architecture. So let's say you have a four-foot parapet. We're now at a nine-foot floor-to-ceiling height in commercial, which I think many of you know is substandard. You know, a twelve-foot to fourteen-foot ceiling is what makes these optimal vibrant commercial spaces. So if our goal is really to have a forty-five-foot building height because it correlates to four stories, I think a better thing to do would be to say, we want four stories, and we want commercial that's thoughtful with a minimum floor plate height of whatever that minimum floor plate is, and then study what that is for successful and vibrant commercial. I think that also would allow a flexibility of uses. So as one commercial tenant leaves and another one comes, you're getting better and better uses. So in summary, I concur with my fellow commissioners, but I do think that we really need to think in very specific detail about what these measurements mean and what they allow for.
Christian may know this better than I do, but typically, most zoning ordinances allow, we're talking about building heights, but most zoning ordinances allow projections beyond that height for certain building elements. And those could include parapet walls, as you mentioned, chimneys, some other mechanical equipment, and so on. So it's not an absolute max height. It may say ten percent of the, you know, building floor area may be projected up to a certain height. So we just have to keep that in mind, especially when we talk about precision with these, you know, measurements and so on. And I'm sure the zoning ordinance already includes rules of measurements and what's allowed and not allowed. So that's not something for us to hash out.
Understood.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, when I think about this problem on cities I've lived in, it did not seem to me that whether the buildings were forty-five or fifty-five feet was very significant. It was important that there was adequate parking for the residents. There was some parking for commercial use where there were mixed-use areas. And so I'd be supportive of fifty-five-foot height for buildings. I mean, I think the only way to get affordable housing in an area that costs as much as this one is pretty high-density housing, which also drives you to taller, you know, more fully utilized pieces of land. And some sort of mixed-use of parking structures or something, so there's some level of people to get into the area and park conveniently. Obvious spots, I think, would free up some land as well. So I'm basically in favor of doing something that is much more dense and much taller than what's in the Sharp Park area now.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to state that my, you know, thinking here, at least the first two topics, you know, I think the way it's numbered, at least in the table and the staff report, I'd probably be in favor of sort of option number three under the question of MUC designation, where it should be applied, which is to say, apply it in all of Palmetto Avenue, but only allow projects in northern Palmetto, which maximize affordable housing production by exceeding current inclusionary housing ordinance requirements. So, and then I would tend to track Commissioner Godwin's perspective with respect to height. Although, you know, again, I think that option two, under height, is the one that appears most, well, appropriate to me, which is to create incentives for affordable housing production by granting additional height above forty-five feet to projects which exceed current inclusionary housing ordinance requirements. So that's my perspective. In terms of connections, then, I guess we can circle back to that. I don't know, Commissioner Big Stick, if you're prepared to speak to that at this point.
Maybe a little better, but before I get there, I first wanted to say, I think that Commissioner Hauser articulated what I was trying to say about the north side of town better than I did to begin with. And I'm in agreement with height in general. I'm not sure if it might be a good compromise, because a part of the discussion is the character of the neighborhood. The wording in number two, instead of granting additional height above forty-five feet, maybe we could say granting additional height above thirty-five feet in that way, by leaving it a little bit more general, a little bit more vague, but putting the thirty-five as the baseline. Then they could come forward with those projects, and we could decide from there, whereas thirty-five is easy across the board. And again, with something like that, I would favor it potentially coming before a commission, just so that there's a little bit more control. But I'm open to maintaining at forty-five, if that's consensus. Definitely, San Jose, getting back to number three, San Jose was the connection that I resonated with most. It felt more natural as being more walkable. Aesthetically, it was a more walkable path to traverse, in my estimation. And after that, I think I'm not quite sure what the other question is exactly asking me to engage with, so I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the team and see what the conversation looks like.
Right, maybe Commissioner Berman, do you feel like you're in a position to talk about the connections at this point?
Sure. In general, just looking briefly at the bike and pedestrian master plan, it looks like a lot of the same routes included in the master plan were mentioned by the public. I think San Jose Avenue is a great addition to that, especially given the new pedestrian bridge. Personally, I am in favor of certainly incorporating three bike priority roads, whether it's, I don't know if it'll be a class-two or a class-three facility, but something to make biking in those locations safer, as well as pedestrian access, especially if there's lack of sidewalks in those areas. I think bikes and pedestrians go hand in hand. And then I think a biker is going to... If we didn't provide comfortable bike facilities on, let's say, San Jose Avenue in the middle of Palmetto, I think a biker would still bike there, just to get to where they want to go. And then... Yeah, I'm not, for this neighborhood, I'm not in favor of a centralized corridor beyond kind of what's already provided on Palmetto. I don't think an east-west centralized corridor here would be better than providing three separate bike-safe modes throughout the Palmetto area. Yeah, I know there's going to be, I'm going to have way more comments in the future and questions, once we get into more detail. But for today, I think option A with Paloma, San Jose, and Clarendon.
And just to clarify for everyone in the bike pedestrian master plan, it's Paloma and Clarendon proposed as a bicycle boulevard class three B.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Let's see here, who is next? I guess it's Commissioner Hauser.
Maya, oh, I was gonna say...
You're up.
Didn't have my hand raised. No, that's okay. I, so I concur with the idea of having it separated. And I don't have the, whatever the option number is, but there was one that was Paloma, San Jose, and Clarendon. And those seemed like natural fits to me, based on the way that they interacted with Highway One. So that's where my opinion falls.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with some bike access on Clarendon. I haven't thought about as much as San Jose, but it sounds like that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I agree. It's not, you know, I deferred it, and actually, in support of the analysis of my colleagues, I think Paloma, San Jose, and Clarendon, as has been identified, makes sense. Commissioner Big Stick, is there anything else you wanted to say about this?
I didn't have my hand raised, but as I was reading the question, most of what occurred to my simple appreciation of it was a choice between San Jose and Santa Rosa, and San Jose won that debate. And after that, I really don't feel like I have helpful feedback.
Okay, if that's really the case, so we'll appreciate your input. So what else, staff, at this point? Do you want or need from the commission in connection with this particular item?
Well, I thank the commission for a lot of really great and thoughtful feedback. I think if the commission wants to spend a few minutes looking at Attachment B and just confirming if anything, especially emphasizes what their values and vision is for a specific plan, or if anything just doesn't quite resonate, and we need to go back and think about it more, that would be really helpful to know. So perhaps if the commission wants to just do a quick scan and individual commissioners raise their hand for anything that stands out, good or bad. I think another just general statement I want to make about this process is that I think it's easy to instinctively think about the tangible, which is building heights and so forth, and really react to how that looks or feels in relation to what you already know and what's in the existing built environment. What we try to do is come at this from a fresh perspective, which is to say, where do we want to go? And that's a more vibrant, you know, dynamic Palmetto and Sharp Park area. How do we do that? Well, we think, you know, we already have a really strong visitor component that comes in the summers, on the weekends, when the weather's good. But how do we make it vibrant other times of the day, or the week, or the season? Well, we think having more people live there is one of those strategies. And so achieving that with higher density is one option to do that. And I think, as we've heard from the community, they don't want the more traditional... And I think, as we've heard from the community, they don't want the more traditional east-west residential streets to change all that much, which means we don't, we heard the community doesn't necessarily want to densify those any further than they already are. And so that leaves us with few options, but to think of the north-south areas, Palmetto being foremost among them, but also Francisco Boulevard to a certain extent. And realizing Eureka Square may not manifest into a dramatic redevelopment in the near future, probably we've got to think about Palmetto and Francisco. And so that's where we came from with this perspective about mixed-use neighborhood versus mixed-use center, higher density needing higher heights. And so it's admittedly a departure from the past and what we know, but it's in hopes of finding a way to achieve the objective and the end state that the communities express, which is more activity, better businesses, more things to do. And to get that, we need people there, people there throughout the day, throughout the week, throughout the year. And so I think we've heard a lot of great feedback from the commission and the community tonight. But as we move forward in this process, if you can keep that perspective in mind as well, and maybe it'll help us work through some of these tough decisions and maybe some difficult responses from the community potentially as we get into more and more detail on these policies and we think about the fear of loss of what we have as compared to the hopes for the future of what we want to achieve.
Right. Well, at this point, does anybody have any kind of overarching comments that they want to offer, perhaps briefly in deference to the hour, with respect to the guiding policy framework? Commissioner Berman.
I don't have any comments or additions on the guiding policy framework, but I did want to come back to the building height items because after my go-around, there were a couple additional points added. I like the idea that Commissioner Hauser came up with, with designating stories. However, I do know that most of our guiding policies, especially the LCLUP and then likely the general plan coming up once we develop it, often refer to heights. So I don't, that, I'll let staff kind of work out if we had kind of inconsistencies between city plans. But if we were to allow just a designated story maximum, I still wouldn't feel comfortable saying four stories because, I mean, a developer can take that and make each of the four stories twelve feet ceiling height. So, I mean, I would consider it for something like three stories. But I don't, especially in the northern Palmetto area, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable with much higher than thirty-five feet, especially just kind of going through street view again. Most of the buildings there currently are one or two stories. And understanding that not everything's going to be developed all at once, I mean, there would, if we allow fifty-five feet or five stories, we're going to have what looks like skyscrapers in this area. And I know past housing projects, especially in this area, residents have really spoken up against tall building heights. And I don't think it's too appropriate to the scale of at least northern Palmetto. So I am still kind of against going much higher than thirty-five. I certainly don't feel comfortable going over forty-five feet. And it's just hard to control if we only give a story limitation. It's hard to control what height a building's actually going to be. But I am in favor of developer flexibility. And I, for one, know that having kind of a flexible, specific plan or precise plan or general plan will allow for more creative development in an area, which I certainly want to see in Palmetto. But I also don't want to get us stuck in, well, we allow fifty-five-foot height buildings in Palmetto and now any building that doesn't, for some reason, need to come through planning because they're in affordable housing and project and the state doesn't require them to come through us for some reason, then a big building just goes there and no one in the public can comment about it. So I just wanted to state that, but I know we'll get a chance to talk about it again.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick.
So given Commissioner Berman's previous comments, I again, just go back to that language that perhaps it could be tweaked, create incentives. And this talking specifically about the north side of Palmetto, create incentives for affordable housing production on the north side of Palmetto by granting additional height, say, above thirty-five feet and no more than forty-five or no more than fifty to projects which exceed current inclusionary housing ordinance requirements. And then, again, I'm kind of in favor of the idea that it comes before a commission so that we can make sure that it's a project we really want there and that's really in character with the neighborhood. After that, just going back through those policies real quick, circling back to the Eureka Square idea. And again, I didn't, I got feedback that Eureka Square is nothing we can bank on. But I just wanted to check in, when we were going back through the general, the draft general plan, we have them down as an MCU, don't we?
Mixed-use center, that's right, at Eureka Square.
Okay, cool. So it seems natural allowing the fifty-five regardless of whether or not they ever go for it. And I just want to make sure that's there with a knock-on-wood sentiment attached. And in the policy themselves, there's mention of office space a couple of times, which I appreciate it might well be needed and maybe should be there. But my sensibility says that office space is not necessarily something we need to highlight and might already be abundant in Pacifica to a place where more office space doesn't necessarily seem inviting toward getting people to want to visit. But that's my sensibility on that one. I had a question actually about the twenty-two-twelve Beach Boulevard site. Because as I was driving by it today, the door was open so I could kind of get a bigger appreciation of the land there than I normally can when I'm just looking at the wall. And it seemed like a really big space, which maybe would be great to be completely filled with a hotel. I'm wondering if it could be, I don't know, feasible to break it apart if a developer has interest in a chunk of it, but not all of it. So that's a question for staff.
Well, sure, anything's possible in terms of a subdivision in light of a future property owner. Currently, the city owns it and is interested in a master plan for its redevelopment. And so I think all we can state is what the council has put out there publicly previously, and that's that we're looking for the site in its totality by and large.
It would be great if a developer wants to take it all and make it a hotel. I just want to make sure there's options on the table. And then the only other thing that didn't resonate as fully as it might have was the bit about sustainability, which the second reading was kind of a quick one. And there's, at the very end, coastal resources and conservation was where it jumped out at me. It just seems like there might be more about what it means that we are a sustainable community. I think it was Commissioner Hauser previously mentioned more trees would be a really nice place to start in making the neighborhood more inviting. And maybe even just checking in on trees in conjunction with sustainability might be, again, a good place to start. But it seems like that could be a little bit more robust in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Hauser, did you have a?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to answer the question on Eureka Square and Francisco. I agree that I think Eureka Square would fit nicely under the mixed-use center. I think Francisco's proximity to Highway One might kind of create some visibility challenges where it potentially could cut off the rest of the Sharp Park area west. So I, that one, I feel more comfortable at a mixed-use neighborhood, but I could, I could be convinced someone had kind of a cogent argument. I wanted to then just respond to something that Commissioner Big Stick said about office space. I did not particularly feel super partial about this, you know, a year or so ago. But on the economic development committee, we spent a lot of time at each meeting talking to people who were residents of Pacifica that were business owners, maybe outside of Pacifica or Pacifica business owners that were local. And one of the biggest barriers to having successful restaurant and retail is the fact that there's no weekday lunchtime crowd. And a lot of businesses commented on the fact that that was due to the lack of office workers that needed to eat lunch during the week. So even though I definitely see, I don't see it as like a huge economic driver or something that's like very exciting and vibrant, I do think that it's a necessary infrastructural component of those things that are vibrant that we do want. So I would be in favor of leaving that. And I know I mentioned, you know, I think it would be a great use for a second story rather than a storefront first story. And then my only other comment was, I just wanted to thank staff for all of the work that they've done. There's clearly a lot of time and vision that went into this. And it's very clear in the way that it's been written up. So I really appreciate that. I'm looking forward to what else you guys come up with.
Thank you. See here, Commissioner Godwin, did you have any other including comments?
No, nothing very specific.
All right. Thank you. I guess I would just say by recap that, well, one, I'd echo that I am really impressed by the comprehensiveness of what we've been looking at here. I had a bit of a clarifying question, I guess, and that's the, the, under Palmetto Avenue in particular, the reference to first-floor space that has frontage on Palmetto and seventy-five percent of it being devoted to, quote, "active uses." I'm curious about where that seventy-five percent number came from. It struck me that it might even be appropriate for it to be higher level and/or I don't know why it wouldn't, we wouldn't want it all to be inactive, ideally inactive uses.
Allison, do you want to touch on that figure?
Yeah, so we had received a comment, a few comments at the concepts workshop expressing desire for maybe some kind of ratio in case office were to go in on the ground floor. That wouldn't necessarily be an active ground floor use. So at that point in time, it was believed that that percentage would offer a little bit of flexibility for other types of uses that may not be active, such as office.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I just didn't mean to interrupt at all. There are also access to upper stories, for example, stairways, entryways, and so on, that's needed. So it's really hard to get a full hundred percent activation.
I see your point. And I guess the only other, it's more of a comment than anything. And I certainly understand kind of a notion of, you know, wanting to build a system where we have folks who might need to come back and get discretionary permits in order to build certain projects once we have this in place. But it does strike me, and I think that one of the staff or consultant folks who's been working with us on this, it's sort of reflected, this can be a very powerful tool and it can be a real incentivizer for developers when they see a streamlined way in, where we've been really prescriptive and very clear about what it is we want and need, and create a streamlined process where somebody's able to come in and basically entitled, so to speak, already by virtue of the document with the environmental assessment already done. So the, it strikes me that we want to be, I think, really circumspect in creating additional, you know, discretionary, you know, sort of processes in the context of this document and this process, which really is, again, I think part of the power of it is creating certainty for folks who might come in and really help us to implement this vision that we're putting together. So that's just at a metal level, something that I wanted to, that's been, I've been thinking about as we've been having this conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Nivlin, for highlighting that point. I think, I'd like to share an observation that there's, I think, a natural human tendency to want to see something before you say you like it or don't like it. But I think when communities can really try to have the vision and the courage to put the difficult work in now and have some faith in the plan, you can really deliver some greater outcomes and have those difficult conversations and balance the community values now as part of the planning process, as part of a plan, rather than pushing it down the road and fighting the fight every time a project comes through. It's exhausting for the community. It's exhausting for the decision-makers. It can be difficult for staff because it pulls us away from other work. If we can really commit to a process as part of the plan, really get messy now, I think that would really be the preference from staff's end. Make these difficult decisions now when we can really publicize it and bring in a broad base. Who do you most often hear from when we're duking it out on a project-by-project basis? People that don't want the project. Is that really representative of the entire community? Well, maybe, maybe not. But I think when you're outside of that difficult emotional project process, you can have a more thoughtful discussion as a community. And again, weigh those various values and those competing perspectives and outcomes and really come and strike the right balance in a better way.
Well, on that note, well, thank you very much. Staff, I think you've got kind of what we're able to give you today, and it's almost tomorrow. So I think what we want to do then is go ahead and close this item, unless there's anything else that staff wants to state.
Hearing nothing from my colleagues, thank you very much, commissioners, for digging into the details and for the thoughtful feedback.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well, then I think what we're going to then do is, one, I think, I don't know if we have Commissioner Liel or somebody can let Commissioner Liel know that we're, he's welcome back. It looks like he's still hanging in there. But if we could have him join us and we'll move on to commission communications. If, does it, do any of the commissioners have communications? I see Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And thank you again for, staff, for putting all that together and working tirelessly on it constantly. It boggles my mind. That having been said, I have two items actually tonight. And the first is the same thing I've been saying week after week after week with a little extra added oomph to it because there was a gratuitously unpleasant conversation I was having with a customer the other day. And I'll say, as a whole, the community is really stepping up, putting on the masks. And thank you, as somebody who works in the service industry, when you come through with a mask on, it makes us feel like you value our life as well as the life of everyone else in the community. And it's important now more than ever to strive to, as they say, flatten the curve. Those masks are probably the hugest chunk and component that we can do amongst each other. And that being said, when you're in a grocery store, please do not lick your fingers if you are choosing to bag and you are trying to open a plastic bag. No names named. And again, I was having a particularly stressful night, so my best self didn't come out, as I was having a particular exchange the other day. But as respectful as it is to have that mask, the second it occurs to you to take off that mask for any reason whatsoever, let alone adding saliva momentarily, albeit as it may into the equation, as you're amongst other folk, especially those trying to serve you, it sparks deep concerns and fears amongst those trying to serve you. So we humbly request that, please, if the thought even for a moment occurs to you that that's a good idea, please don't. So that having been said, the other thing I have, which is much more in alignment with planning commission for a change. I mentioned a few months back about the development project, the affordable housing project in Moss Beach. And it looks like there's a San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow at nine AM. And they'll be meeting to discuss changes to the San Mateo County LCP so that this mid-Penn Cypress Point Affordable Housing seventy-one unit can move forward. So if anyone has interest in supporting affordable housing on the county level, tomorrow morning, nine AM, that's the time to show up, much as you are right now, in Zoom forum. San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, please, if you feel so inclined, support this affordable housing project in Moss Beach. And you also have the ability to voice concerns otherwise, if you feel otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Berman.
Tiger, I'll be attending that. But I also wanted to mention, and Tiger, you might want to chime in too, because I know you attended. Last Wednesday, the city council had a special meeting on the unhoused in Pacifica. had a special meeting on the unhoused in Pacifica specifically motorhomes um RVs large vans etc um it was a really interesting and long meeting but there were a lot of really great uh community comments um some I'd say it was kind of close to 50/50 there are certainly concerns um but then there was uh certainly support for finding um appropriate locations to allow under a permitted basis for people living in some form of motorhome um to locate themselves um so I just mentioned it just so everyone's aware this is something that city council is considering um and items may come back to us at some point or if you have personal uh concerns or comments to to listen in on updates on that and it's the unhoused in Pacifica um specifically motorhomes.
Thank you Commissioner Berman I I don't see any other hands so I'm going to go ahead and uh
Since uh Commissioner Berman uh invited me to chime in if I may for just a moment I would like to.
Of course you may.
Thank you sir um and as uh as the Vice President of the Board Directors for the Resource Center though I'm not speaking on behalf of them in this moment and as somebody who's been very vested in um this process of trying to get something in place to help those in motorhomes to um find housing um for me personally it was a a fairly painful experience to watch that process and especially the conclusion um the silver linings being it it seems that council is interested nonetheless and hopefully finding solutions that may aid those who are having difficulty finding housing to find housing on the one hand and on the other hand um I I know at least in my mind and hopefully in the minds of other members of the community it sparked uh creative juices flowing so um I had a a very similar to what was proposed suggestion that I think I'll be bringing forward uh that I just kind of want to check in with um the Executive Director of the Resource Center about to make sure that's actually a half decent plan and not just a half-baked one um but I know that uh my mind continues to think in terms of hopefully helping those who frankly just need a hand up and um hopefully we can find a way as a community to assist those amongst us who are truly members of our community who truly just need a moment of stability to find their way toward a more permanent stability and thank you for bringing that up Commissioner Berman.
Thank you very important issues no doubt um well that then is uh Commission Communications we'll move then to Staff Communications.
Thank you Chair uh really quickly the other council meeting that happened last week was a regular council meeting and um there were two appeal items on the agenda the first was the Terranova Verizon uh site and the uh city council um upheld the Planning Commission's decision and denied the appeal and the other item was the Danman Project Appeal and that one was continued to the first meeting in September at the um the request of both the appellant and the applicant and uh last item is that uh within the last couple weeks we welcomed a new Public Works Director her name's Lisa Peterson she's from Los Gatos previously and I'm sure um eventually you all get a chance to meet her. That's all I have.
Thank you so much so that takes us then to uh adjournment and I would entertain a motion to adjourn if uh someone wants to make that motion. Uh Commissioner Hauser.
The motion's adjourned in the meeting.
So a second to that motion. Commissioner Lille.
I'll second the motion.
Okay well we have a motion to adjourn as well as a second uh can we get a roll call though please for that.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you well we are adjourned then and I appreciate everybody's uh participation this evening uh good night stay safe.